I think we're ready to start the introductory video. Hi, good evening. I'd like to call the July 21, 2020 meeting of the County Commission to order. Thank you all for being with us. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our County Commission meeting this evening, I would like to ask for a moment of silence to acknowledge the passing of John Lewis, who served as a member of the United States House of Representatives for 34 years, serving the 5th congressional district in Georgia. Representative Lewis was also a leader of the civil rights movement in our nation. As a young man, he helped organize the March on Washington, which helped lead to the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. To demonstrate support for African-Americans' right to vote, he also helped organize the Selma to Montgomery marches. During the march, he and other nonviolent activists were brutally assaulted by Alabama state troopers. By highlighting the repressive measures that states would go to to restrict minorities' constitutional rights, these marches grew public support for the passage of the Federal Voting Rights Act of 1965. John Lewis made our country a fairer and freer place. So before we start our work this evening, please join us in a moment of silence to remember Congressman John Lewis. Thank you. All right, I've got a couple of announcements to go over, but first, I'm going to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all County Commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? I do want to disclose that we will be voting on a solar RFP for public facilities in the Board meeting this evening. I work in the solar industry, but the company I own has no role in this project, did not participate in the bidding process, and has no financial interest in it. So I don't have any conflict of interest on that matter, but just wanted to disclose that I do work in this sector, but am not involved in the project. All right, so there being none, no financial conflicts of interest, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all matters the Board votes on at this meeting. All right, we come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda?
Chairman, I'd like to make, just make a couple of comments about the consent agenda because I don't, I want to make sure that the public doesn't miss a few of the things that are on there. I'm not asking that we bring them forward in, in the main part of the meeting, but I do want to note that, that there is approval for the AB Tech INCA site assessment and master plan. There's been a lot of questions and concern about that over the years, and so that is moving forward and looking at what can be done with that site. The other thing that was particularly big and the reason, you know, this is the, the design and installation of the artificial turf fields at the Buncombe County Sports Park, which was part of the major TDA grant that the county received in the expansion of the Buncombe County Sports Park, includes the INCA Heritage Trail and some other things that are, that are going to be going on over there, but looks, that is, that is moving forward. And, and there was one other thing. Let's see. Maybe that was it, but, and of course, he's moved by consensus because we all, we all either have supported him in the past, and it's just updates, but I just want to make sure that the public, if you're interested in that, go back and take a look at it. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions? All right. Before we prove the consent agenda, just one process question for the Board. We do have some written public comments that have been submitted for the meeting this evening. Lamar, I know I have a copy of them. Do other Board members have a copy of the comments as well?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I don't know if you've had a chance to look at them yet. Several of them are related to the solar RFP. There's not that many, so we'll read those when we get to that item. Then we've got about six pages front and backs, about 12 pages of additional comments that we could read when we get to the public comments section. So it's a fairly large amount, but it's, you know, I think our current policy is that we would do comments up to an hour. I'm sure it would not take that long. So I just wanted to check in with the Board and ask if that policy is what we want to continue doing in terms of reading public comments at our, at our meetings while we're not taking them physically in person. We could also, you know, check in on that when we get to that section in the agenda. I just kind of wanted to raise it as a question since it's been a while since we, we talked about it.
So, so what you're saying is we just limit it to an hour and then we stop, or can we just?
That's right. Like, for example, when we had the other issue where we had hundreds of comments, we, we took a total of an hour of public comment and then, and then didn't read them all because obviously it would have taken, you know, 10 hours probably.
Could we maybe start them and then see where we're, if we, if we're at the hour mark and there's two more, let's read them. I would like to make sure that anyone who takes the time to comment is really heard.
Well, I think one of the things that's, that's done in the, in the ways they're printed up, Lamar, which is very helpful, is that many of these are the same thing, the same comments. And so if we just, I mean, there's one page where it's a similar comment, and then there's a list of the names, which we could say there's 20 people. I don't know that we have to read every name, you know, for brevity's sake, but, but if, if, if it's, I mean, if it's the same, if it's the same message, I don't know.
Well, just to give you info, for descriptive comments, there are 86 of those. We only printed one text of that.
Right.
And they do have 86 people that basically said the same trip for that information, but we didn't put, we didn't include 86 of those within this package.
Oh, I know. Yeah, I'm with you.
And then there are quite a few others that are put together that.
So what I was saying is that we have 86 comments, public comments, that were either emailed or voicemail, left the message that basically referenced the same information. We only printed that one time within the packet, so that can be read once, and then you can either read the names. But we also have a second group that were very similar as well, that are in the general comments. And if you wanted to group those together, you could, but those, they do have some differences within those comments, but they're very similar in nature.
Do we have any voicemails that were submitted as well?
They are included. The voicemails have been typed out.
They've been typed out and transcribed. Okay, great.
Lamar, do these get posted with our minutes?
They will get posted with the minutes with the packet.
Thank you.
Okay. And, and one other question someone asked me, how long do we take comments up until the time of our meeting? Is there a kind of a cutoff time? Because you have to kind of organize this information, right?
Yes. We stop at 5:00 Monday.
On Monday?
So yesterday at 5:00.
All right.
And they start on Thursday. Well, actually, they start on Wednesday after the packet is posted, the agenda is posted.
All right. Well, Commissioners, let's just, we'll continue to think about this. I think we have enough tonight. It won't take an hour, so we can definitely read all these in less than an hour. So just wanted to check in on that.
Yeah. Like on the 86, did you list all their names?
They are listed.
Okay, so at least call out all their names where that they know that we did receive it, right?
Okay.
Okay. And if any of the ones that are really the same thing, I think we could do that also.
Okay. You know, since I just got it, I mean, I haven't really had a chance to kind of think about how to abbreviate, but I'll try to do it on the fly a little bit if, if I can find some ways to do that. All right, all right. Thanks, everyone. Let's, yes, ma'am?
There had been just some discussion at our 3:00 PM briefing about adding an agenda item. Is that something that we wanted to pursue?
Yeah, we did talk about, Commissioner Pendlin talked about the idea of the systemic racism and health resolution. We, it would have to be by consensus. I've heard nothing but positive feedback. You know, I'm certainly supportive of it. I would kind of like to think about it a little bit more between now and the next meeting, so I'm certainly going to vote for it, but I don't know, I just kind of wanted to reflect on it a little bit.
DK also said she, I asked her to give all the Commissioners a copy because she mentioned at the beginning that she wanted to hear back if we wanted any changes in it, so.
Yeah, I intend to support it too, but I tend to agree with, kind of like to probably make sure it's on the next, next meeting.
I just wanted to close the loop on that discussion.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for that. All right, very good. Do we have a motion to approve the consent?
So move.
Second?
All right, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda, and also we'll follow the remainder of the agenda as published. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next item is a public hearing on the COVID-19 PTO recognition, and our County Manager, Avril Pender, will present this item.
Thank you, Commissioner. During the early days of the COVID pandemic, the county, like other employers, we closed some of our public facing offices and allowed our employees to work from home. Due to our role though as public servants, employees were reassigned to provide staff into the various needs for the COVID response. Employees also had to maintain and provide our mandated services. We estimate that employees worked more than 80,000 COVID response hours between March 12 and May 31, with some employees working on average an additional 24 hours each week over those 12-week period. We've identified three categories for personal time off awards. Two weeks for salaried employees that logged over 300 hours and RCD nurses, one week for employees that were outside of the home or in the ELC, and three days for employees that logged 24 hours for the COVID response. I must say, I'm extremely proud of the work our staff has done, from our landfill operators and transfer station operators to our permit and inspection staff, economic services caseworkers, that all saw a significant increase in volume and workload. All of our employees, they're stepped up, and none of, at no time did our service suffer. We still have employees that are reassigned, and we're still continuing our COVID response, but I wanted to pause today and to thank and appreciate the employees for the tremendous effort and dedication that they have displayed. For you to award the personal time off, we must have that public hearing, and you must amend the personal ordinance. Those, those two pieces are required for you to award personal time off. So after you conduct the public hearing, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pender. So, we're not allowing in-person comments for public hearings at this time. So I think I'll ask Mr. Joyner, for the purposes of the public hearing, did we receive any comments from any members of the public for this item?
No.
Okay. And does that satisfy the public hearing requirements that we have inquired? We solicited comments through the process we have during this time of social distancing and haven't received any? We'll note that in the minutes.
Yes, yes, sir, it does. It gets, it gets messy if, remember, if there was remote participation by, for instance, Commissioner Edwards wasn't here but was participating remotely, then you'd have to allow for a special sequence and open it for 24 hours past the close of the public hearing. But all members are present, so we have no issues.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right. So the public hearing requirements have been satisfied, and so you're seeking approval of an ordinance amending the county's personnel policy?
Yes, sir, that will give me the authority to award that time to the employees that have worked throughout this pandemic.
All right. Is there a motion to approve an ordinance?
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman, you have to close the public hearing.
Okay. I'm going to officially close the public hearing at 5:56 PM. All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending Buncombe County's personnel ordinance?
So move.
Second?
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Ms. Pender, do you have any other items under County Manager's report?
Just clarification. During our brief in this afternoon, we talked about another resolution about reparations, but I wanted to make, did you want staff to guide? You didn't really close that loop either. We closed it on the discrimination one, but we didn't really close the loop. We, staff is prepared to draft a resolution, but I just want to make sure if that's what you wanted us to do and bring that forward at our next meeting.
I'd be happy to speak to that. Welcome hearing from anyone else. I think I'm interested in doing some of the drafting, and we certainly want to look at what the city drafted. So I think the plan would be to work on a draft at the Commissioner level and share that across the full commission and with staff, and would certainly welcome input from any and all voices. I don't know if anyone would like to add anything, but we will, we will take the lead on the initial drafting phase.
Thank you.
So do we have enough on the Board to move that forward tonight?
To move?
I mean, she's, she's seeking guidance to, I don't understand what we're, what we're wanting to do.
No, I was asking guidance. Do you want staff to prepare a resolution to bring forward next time? But Commissioner Beach Ferraro said that the Board would draft the resolution and circulate that, so it wasn't work for staff. I would just want to make sure if you needed staff to draft that or not.
Right.
Okay. Thanks for asking. Good process question. All right. Anything else, Ms. Pender?
No, sir. Thanks.
All right. Great. Okay, we don't have any items under old business. Under new business, we have, we need to appoint a voting delegate to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners event that's coming up. It's an annual event. I represented the Board last year. This year, it's all going to be virtual, so, so I'm, I'm happy to do it again this year, but if anybody else has a burning desire to do this, I'm happy to, happy to talk about it with anybody who has a strong interest in it.
Well, the only thing I'll say is that I did it for a few years and really enjoyed it, so if you don't want to do it, or you want to do part of it, or whatever, I'd be glad to assist in it, but if you want to do it again, that's fine. But, you know, I don't, I don't mind doing it. I've enjoyed it when I've done it in the past in person. It's a, I'd recommend that, as, as a Commissioner, that when, when it opens back up in person, I mean, it's a good, it's a good thing for you to go to. It really is. It really is. So, but no, I'm fine with you doing it, Chairman, if you want to.
Well, thank, well, thank you. And is there any member who hasn't done it in the past who might want to do it? I think it's, it is interesting.
It is.
So, again, I'm, I'm happy to do it, and I'm happy for Joe to be, or I think we'd need a primary and an alternate, so we could do that. But is there anybody else who might want to do it? No pressure, but just, I know everyone's busy, but just wanted to ask. All right. If not.
If my calendar allows, I would be interested, so.
You want to check it real quick? Check it real quick.
Yeah, I'd be interested in doing that.
All right. Well, I think it's good for different people to get experience doing this, so I'll nominate Amanda to be our delegate and Mr. Belcher as our alternate for this year. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, excellent. All right, next up is the solar bid solicitation, and Jeremiah Leroy, our, from our Sustainability Office, will present this item with some assists from Finance, it looks like. Thank you all for being here.
Hi. Good evening, Commissioners. Excited to be here tonight. This has been a long time coming, so I'm, I'm happy to be here to talk to you about this. First of all, just wanted to point out where sustainability and where these projects fit into our strategic plan. Clearly, one of our community-focused areas is the environmental and energy stewardship, specifically high-quality air, water, farmland, and of course, renewable energy for future generations. Sorry if this slide feels a little busy, but it's my attempt to put 10 years of information into one slide. And
Probably not a good idea.
It's essentially a simplified way to look at the pathway to trying to reach this 100% renewable goal that we have. Clearly, we have the aggregated solar, which is what's in front of us tonight, and it's intended to be sort of a proof of concept, and then moving forward, continuing to look at, at similar processes. We've got, and I want to put this on your radar because I will be coming to you in the not-too-distant future to talk about high-performance building policy as well. We don't currently have anything on the books that really defines how we build going forward, and so that's something that we're very interested in bringing to the Board and showing you various options for, I'm sure you've all heard of things like lead policies and things of that nature, and as well as fleet policies, you know? How do we reduce our greenhouse gas emissions through vehicle electrification and things of that nature? We have a facility assessment, which is just kicking off. As a matter of fact, the kickoff was last week, looking at potentially rightsizing, removing inefficient assets in favor of space management, high-performance facilities, that sort of thing. And of course, we want to look at utility scale options where they're available. We obviously have our, our Woodfin Solar Project, which is just terrific, but we're going to continue to look for those types of opportunities to try and help reach our goal. And last but not least, is energy efficiency. We have that sort of on the bottom, the long arrow, because it really is the bedrock of, of this plan. It is, it is important to focus on efficiency first. Renewable energy is terrific, and we want to do it as much as possible, but energy efficiency really is sort of the backbone of continuing to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. So that's my, that's my one-pager for you. But here's what we're really here to talk about today, and that is the solar solicitation on public facilities. This was a collaborative effort that we've talked about many times over the course of the last year, year and a half, for bidding out solar projects on public agencies, total of over 40 projects and seven megawatts combined. Seven megawatts is a nebulous number to a lot of folks. To give you some sort of frame of reference there, seven megawatts, our landfill solar project that's 25 acres is only five megawatts. This is 40% more than that. So it's a significant amount of solar on public buildings. And of course, Buncombe County, AB Tech, Asheville City and Buncombe County Schools, and the city of Asheville, I don't want to kick them to the side, but they're, they're colored differently because they'll have to fund their own projects. So, and this is obviously the list of specifically where we've looked at, and if you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them about specific projects.
So I do have some questions.
Absolutely.
Or a question, maybe on the selection, and a com, and a, maybe a comment or two. I'm supportive of, of the project. My, I have a couple of concerns that I want to make sure that comes out in the presentation, and if I'm getting ahead of you, you can tell me.
No problem.
And when I look at Buncombe County Schools, I think of, you know, I think of INCA Intermedia, it's a new school, so it doesn't give me pause at all. You know, with us making this investment, you know, probably, I don't know if it's, I don't know if they'll all be on the roof, or they'll be somewhere else on site. I don't, I don't know.
Yep.
But somewhere in here, you know, we need to make sure that if we're, if we are placing these on the, on the roofs of these buildings, that these are not buildings that we're planning on tearing down and putting new buildings up.
Absolutely.
Okay, and it may sound like a, you know, some people might think, well, that, that's obvious. Well, it's
No.
Not always.
It's a very fair point.
So, and the other, other question I would ask
Sure.
is I would want, I look at the city schools and, and I was here, Commissioner, Chairman, was here when we approved to, to build the Asheville Middle School in Isaac Dixon, and it was, it was a lot of collaboration that that occurred, and I'm, you know, I know Isaac Dixon is smaller, but I'm wondering why Isaac Dixon didn't make the list.
Sure. I can answer both of those questions.
Thank you.
To start with Buncombe County Schools, there is very little rooftop construction on the county schools, mostly because their, their internal staff just, was just not on board with doing rooftop projects. The vast majority of Buncombe County Schools' projects are ground-mounted projects that are on pieces of land near the buildings. So there's very little rooftop there. They just
It's on Buncombe County School property.
Buncombe County Schools' property. That is correct. With Asheville City Schools, Isaac Dixon didn't make the list because it's, it's a, it's a complicated sort of long process, but Isaac Dixon has been doing private fundraising to put solar on their school for a number of years, and they have actually already bid it out, had a contractor the whole nine yards. And so it didn't seem appropriate to get involved where they had already done private fundraising from parents, they had already bid the project out themselves, they have contracted with Sundance Solar, which is a local firm. So we left that one alone because the school system essentially said, we've, we've, we've got this. We've already, we've moved down the road on this project. We've already got a lot of the funding for it, so it didn't seem like the, it was appropriate for the county to be involved in that particular school.
The PTO is putting solar on the school. Seriously?
That is, well.
That sure bumps our conversation that we had a few weeks ago about playgrounds, doesn't it?
Yeah, a very large, well.
I mean, how much is that going to cost?
Honestly, I don't know. It's not a project that we got involved in in any way. If I had to guess, it's multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's a big school.
I think they had a, I think they had a
They had a very large
anonymous donor
That's exactly right.
Contributed to, to a big part of it.
They had a very large private donation, but I don't know the number.
The reason I mention it is because, one is both those, both those schools are new.
Yep.
The other is, is that I remember visiting Isaac Dixon for the first time before it was built, the old Isaac Dixon, and it was, it was a pretty big, big, big deal on my plate to make sure that that, that was taken care of, and I just wanted to make sure that, that
Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to make sure that, I'm sure it wasn't left out, you know, for any particular reason at all, but I just wondered why it didn't make the list because it was a new one, so.
Yeah. It didn't make the list because the school essentially said, we've, we've already done the due diligence to get this one done. I don't know the timeline for it.
They don't need any additional help?
Again, they had a very large private donor
Okay.
for a very large chunk of it, but I'm not, I'm not, again, it was private, so I don't know what that number is.
So I'm taking that as a
I can help here. The eight years I was on the school board, Isaac Dixon, not only do they have the strongest PTO in the county, but they function. They started their own after-school program 10 years ago, and it's still going strong. And they're fortunate because those parents go deep in their pockets and they have a lot of connections. They can get the money.
Well, I just wanted to
Yeah, they can get it.
Make sure as, as we're looking at this project in the school, that, you know, that we were, that if there was some help needed there, that, that, you know, we might want to give it, but if, if they don't need it, that's awesome. So
Yeah, agreed.
Congratulations.
Yeah, they did.
So, the last time I was in front of you, we talked specifically about the county projects. Just to give you an idea of where those costs came in, we had an estimated project cost of about 2.9 million. It really came in at just under 2.5, so a little over $450,000 less than our estimated costs. I'll get into some more specifics on, on the lower cost as we move forward. Again, just to give you an idea of the, the low bid for each of these individual agencies and a total aggregated cost of, of just under two, $10.3 million, and that is for all 47 projects. And that is for all 47 projects and seven megawatts.
That's, can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
So, but that doesn't, that's for the 40, is that for the 40, for the 47?
I'm sorry, you're correct.
That's for the 40 excluding the city's seven, which they'll pay for themselves.
That was my mistake, absolutely. I'm so used to saying 47 projects, it just comes out naturally now.
Not a problem.
No, you're absolutely right. That does not include the seven city projects.
Okay, thank you.
Those are on their own.
Okay, got it.
So again, total project costs, just again to kind of lay it all out for you, construction and installation came in just under that 10.3 million, and that does again exclude the city of Asheville. Financing costs, Don Warnes here to talk a little bit more about financing, so I won't get into a lot of details about that right this minute. But we did use some estimated costs that we got from our financial consultants. And looking at a 15-year loan using the sort of high estimated interest rate that we might get, you'd be looking at about $2.2 million in total interest and debt issuance costs. I want to call it closing costs because that's how I think about it. But it's debt issuance costs and interests combined, about 2.2 million. Good news there is that we do qualify for $2.4 million in Duke Energy solar rebates for these programs. So if we were to be able to capture all of those rebates, that would bring the total cost of the projects to 10.1 million. So the solar rebates have the potential to at least cover the interest and debt issuance costs.
So tell me a little bit about the rebates.
Absolutely.
You know, we've got that as a reduction in the cost.
Correct.
Is that, is that absolutely for sure? That we will get 2.4 million in reduction in cost on the project from Duke?
I can't say that it's absolutely 100% sure for sure. What I can say is that we have a very high degree of confidence that these rebates are available and we're eligible for them. To give you a little bit of background, we keep in pretty constant contact with Duke Energy about this because they're very aware that we'll, if it gets approved, they're going to be getting a lot of rebate applications from us in the not-too-distant future. The rebate program is broken into three categories, it's residential, commercial, and nonprofit. The nonprofit rebate is what the local governments qualify for. That rebate has about seven megawatts of capacity, which is about the size of these programs, and it has been completely underutilized. Those rebates have been sitting there for the last three years and a total of half a megawatt has been used out of the seven and a half megawatts available. So there's a lot of capacity in that program. In addition, every January, they add additional capacity. So January 1st, they're going to roll in two and a half additional megawatts of capacity, which will bring them to closer to nine and a half, which means we should easily come in under that and be able to qualify for the vast majority of these rebates. Again, it, there's potential for that to change a little bit, depending on how many more applications they get from other local nonprofits, but over the first three years, that program has just not been used at all. And so that's frankly, one of the, one of the real benefits, I think, to the fact that it hasn't been used is that we can take advantage of it. And again, they know it's coming. We've been in pretty consistent discussions with Duke Energy over the last year. And I have a meeting with them next week to discuss how they would take, you know, 40 rebate applications at one time, trying to make the process efficient. So that's just a little bit about that. I certainly can answer any additional questions you have about the rebate.
Jeremiah, I got a question. When we were talking project costs, you were talking basically the equipment and installation and all that. But have we done inspections on the, if these are going on buildings, will there be an added cost to have to upgrade a building?
No.
Is, okay, and is there any of our equipment that's being run throughout all of our buildings? Is there any reason to upgrade something inside the building to make sure that the equipment will, I mean, I'm just
No, that's a very fair question, not at this time. As a part of the due diligence in determining which facilities made the most sense, we did structural engineering on all of them to ensure, we had to get that stamp from an engineer saying, you know, it's got the collateral load, it can handle that collateral load of an additional solar project, as well as, you know, the electrical work and the various drawings that electricians have to do. So we really did try our best to do as much due diligence upfront as possible. Number one, to make sure that we had the right facilities, but also to make the bidding process a lot easier for us, just so we can compare apples to apples when it came from, you know, various bids. So, you know, we feel very strongly that the facilities that we've chosen are good to go.
All right, thank you.
Sure. There was one other note on this slide, and that was just about project costs coming in significantly below the original estimates. And really, there's twofold reason for that. Number one is that frankly, COVID had an impact on the solar industry and solar prices have come down significantly. We also feel like this proof of concept in terms of aggregated procurement was really effective. We heard from multiple developers that said, you know, not only are solar prices coming down, but because we're doing this sort of bulk purchasing in terms of these bids, you know, most of these manufacturers were able to lower prices even further in order to try and get these jobs. So I've never heard anyone complain about something incoming under budget, but I just, you know, being that there was that much of a gap, I felt that was, an explanation was necessary. So we want to talk about utility costs and savings. So annual electricity costs for these agencies is here. What we're looking at here is sort of a snapshot in time. Obviously, annual electricity costs vary. They go up and down depending on weather and utility rates. This is a pretty good snapshot in time. It does not include much of 2020. 2020, for obvious reasons, has been a bit of an anomaly for all of us. So we did not include any bills from 2020, but it gives you a pretty reasonable idea of the annual electricity cost of each of these agencies. The estimated savings is just for year one here. And that is expected that you have a first-year savings and then you base long-term savings on potential annual escalation of utility rates, which is about 3% historically. So that's where we get from a 30-year payback, that 27.2 million in utility savings over 30 years that you see below.
So do you have any idea why there's such a difference between, you know, the city schools and AB Tech? For example, if you look at the estimated savings, you know, the Asheville City Schools is showing a much higher percentage than AB Tech and a little bit higher percentage than the county schools.
It has everything to do with the facilities themselves, how much energy they consume, but also what does the roof look like? What's the orientation of the roof? How much space is there versus how much equipment is up on the roof? So the system sizes can be a little varied, but at the same time, some of them are simply more complicated projects that require a lot more conduit runs and ground penetrations in some cases. So it's really just a function of what was available, you know?
So the cities proportionately putting more solar on their facilities, the city schools than the other ones. So that's, it's just as a percentage of their use, they had more useful roof space at this time, basically.
That's exactly right. The city schools have frankly, big, open, flat roofs, and AB Tech doesn't have as many of those. And then you've got county schools, for example, I mean, their savings are significant, again, because you're looking at ground-mounted systems that are typically more cost-effective, simply because you don't have to get up on a roof. So there's, there's various reasons. But yeah, I think that, to your point, Mr. Chairman, you know, it really is, as a percentage of their total available space, it's just smaller at AB Tech.
So was any other options at AB Tech included? I mean, there's a lot of land at AB Tech.
Yeah.
There's a lot of land there.
We kicked the can on a couple of other potential options. They didn't fit at this time. The Inca Campus was one that we really looked at. They didn't want to move forward with Inca because they're still sort of working on a master plan for that space. I know that there was some funding approved to redo the roof, I think, for that building, but there's also that fairly large land in front of it that frankly, it gets my eyes really big every time I drive by. It's very exciting, but
You were reading my mind.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure. But at the same time, they said, you know, we've really got this master plan. We want to finish that out. We're potentially looking at more parking needs and things of that nature, so.
But it wouldn't preclude, once that was completed, knowing what the plan was at AB Tech, to revisit solar?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, this, certainly this, as a whole, is a big swing.
Yeah.
But it certainly doesn't preclude any of these agencies, honestly, from looking at
Adding off.
future facilities.
Okay.
Whether it's a new facility or as things get re-roofed or things of that nature.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Right, and this wasn't necessarily an exhaustive, you know, there wasn't necessarily an exhaustive analysis of every single public building, but it was just sort of, because if we'd done that, we'd probably still be talking about
That's exactly right.
getting the RFP out. So I mean, at some point, we just sort of had to decide, hey, let's go with the buildings that have been vetted. We know there's more, but let's go with this because it's already a big, you know, this is a significant undertaking. So kind of go with that and then come, there'll be plenty of other ones to come back to if we want to in the future.
That is very much a good way to describe it. I think we took, I don't want to say the low-hanging fruit necessarily, but we certainly went and talked to the facility staff and said, you know, you know these buildings better than anyone else. Where should we spend our time? What makes the most sense? And that includes our own internal staff. And so that's really how that list got sort of narrowed down to the 40 projects you see today. So again, we want to talk about these lifetime savings, you know? We're looking at $27.2 million lifetime savings, but that's the gross, not the net. And so when you look at what the potential total cost of the projects could be with the rebates and without the rebates, just again, so you can get that sense for what those look like, you'd be looking at anywhere from 14.7 to 17.1 million dollars in the net lifetime savings of these projects. Again, all of them combined. And again, again, just focusing on things like simple payback. With and without rebates, you'd be looking at 14 or 11 years. And again, we have a fairly high confidence that we'll get the vast majority of those rebates, but we wanted to be open and show you what this, what these numbers look like with both options.
So Jeremiah?
Yep.
So this means that this system would be completely, basically, we would be paying for it after 11 years.
Yes.
And so we've got a 30-year system,
Yep.
which means now we've got 19 years of pure savings. Because I know the savings, if we just went out and preached, we're saving this on utility, this on utility, and not slide it over
Sure.
on the, on the, the bond payment or the debt service. If we didn't slide it over, then I could see we come up with 30 million, but truly, we're going to be a little less than that because we're going to have to pay something back. But in 12 years, so after, basically after the 12th year, even though we got maybe a 15-year debt service, 12 years, we're going to be able to say, we're saving actually this on electricity.
We're going to get into that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't mean to jump ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're, that's fine, that's fine.
Well, I think as we, as we look at this, you know, it's a valid point. We don't have a guarantee on those rebates. And I'm not trying to be negative.
No, it's, absolutely, it's a fair point.
We don't have a guarantee on those rebates because I didn't hear you guarantee me that we was going to get those rebates.
Absolutely not.
You didn't do that, did you?
No, sir, absolutely not.
I didn't think you did. So when we look at this, I'm hopeful that we get those. And if we do, but, you know, tonight, you know, we're looking at a cost of 12.5 million.
That's correct.
Right?
That's correct.
And we're hopeful, and I would be too, as a commissioner, that we would get. And how do we do that? I mean, how do we, will you be coming back to us? Will you be reporting back on the rebates? How will we know that we're
I'm certainly happy to do that. So the process is that once you apply for, when you're creating a solar installation, you have to apply for an interconnection to the grid, and that's owned by Duke Energy. So you submit an application to connect to Duke's grid. Once you do that, they give you basically your number in line, so to speak. Once you have that number, you're allowed to submit a rebate application. Now, you have to build it within a year of getting approval. But once you're in line, you're in line. And so you've sort of saved your place, which is why one of our highest priorities, should we move forward after this evening, is getting those applications going. So that we can get our place in line, and once you're there, you stay there. So we, that's again, that's one of the reasons we feel pretty confident about our ability to do that. But you're absolutely right, there is no, there is no guarantee. That is, I would not use that word, just a high degree of confidence, I like to say.
And I would, you know, I would want, myself, I would want to know. It's in the presentation that we're going to, you know, try to get the rebates. And it would, if this is approved, it'd be good for the public to know that they're not paying that much. They're not paying 12.5, they're paying 10.1, or they end up paying, end up paying 11.5 or whatever it is.
Absolutely.
I think it's important for them to know that. So
Yeah, I would be
It's good we have that resource and
I would be happy to provide
your department works on all that and takes, and goes after the rebates and everything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Absolutely, I would be very happy to provide updates whenever you need them. No problem.
Thank you, sir.
So I would be remiss without at least mentioning the environmental impacts. That's why I'm here. And so just to give you a sense of what the scale of these projects are, we're talking approximately 9.3 million kilowatt-hours. That's a little under 12% of the total kilowatt-hours that all of these facilities use combined. So it's a pretty significant hit, right? The annual carbon reduction, 6,600 metric tons, that's not a number that really resonates with folks. So we give these great carbon equivalents in terms of the number of, you know, 7.3 million pounds of coal burned, 1,100 homes electricity use for a year, or the amount of carbon sequestered by 8,600 acres of forest. So there's true environmental impacts, I think, to these projects as well. Certainly, we think that they're cost-effective and we think that that lifetime savings really makes a lot of sense. But there's more than one reason to do solar and we feel very strongly that the environmental impacts are a very important part of why we're doing this. I'm going to hand the next slide over to Don. He's going to walk you through some more details about the debt financing options.
Good evening, good to see you all again.
Good evening.
So there's been some talk about the cost and how we're going to pay for this. Total amount to be financed, we're saying roughly 10.3 million. Issuance costs would be about 150,000. So I talked to our financial advisors and we have drafted an RFP for a bank loan because that is the best vehicle really to go out is direct placement with a bank as opposed to going to the market. And we, they gave me some numbers to work with, a high average and a low average for a 15-year loan versus a 20-year loan. And as you can see, the rates on there. And then you have an interest rate, like the 15-year low is 1.5, the 15-year high is 2.5. But you have to have the total all-in cost, which includes the issuance cost converted to a percentage. So that's why you see the 1.7 and the 2.7. We're going to focus on 15 years because that would be my preference because we're going to save money if we can do it the shorter. You know, the longer we go out, the more it costs us. So looking at a 15-year issuance, the debt service, low estimate, high estimate, this is all the units excluding the city of Asheville. So total cost would be, on the low side, 11.5, on the high side, it'd be 12.4 million. Now, breaking this down further to figure out what is the cash flow from this, we have a 15-year financing cash flow analysis. So we have debt service, the Duke rebates, and the electric savings for the county only. So we took the high estimate, we added in a column for the Duke rebate, we took the county's electric bill savings, and then you can see the total cash flow on an annual basis as where things would work out. So you can see cumulatively, we would be negative cash flow of 439,000. That's strictly the county. If we took the same 15-year high estimate and we took the debt service and the Duke rebates for all units excluding the city of Asheville, and we took just the savings for county on electric, you can see the negative cash flow after 15 years would be 8.1 million. Now, if we take this and we have the debt service, the Duke rebates, and the electric savings, so if we're able to recapture those savings for Asheville City Schools, Buncombe County Schools, and AB Tech along with the county, you can see that we end up with actually positive cash flow, to Commissioner Penland's point, after 11 years. We start seeing the savings. We start seeing that covering the cost of the debt. So that takes us to this slide, and I'll let Jeremiah talk about, unless you have any questions about the debt financing.
Can you go back a slide?
Absolutely.
Is that a Colorado mashcanal?
No, a sugar skulls.
Oh. Sorry, random question.
It's all right.
So if, go back one more. Okay, then go to the last one. So if we, even if we get half the rebates, if we got half the rebates, we're we're still, we're still cash flowing and probably in the, within the finance we're still, we're still cash flowing in probably in the, within, within the finance period.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most likely.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Don, question I've got. Where's the money coming from to make the loan payments?
Well, that's where we would have to, as, when I say recapture the savings from the other units, we would either, when they come in for their budget presentations and they're saying, we have X number of dollars for utilities, we would reduce it by that saving, so we would not give them that portion of their ask. That's how we would have to recapture it. AB Tech has their school, their capital commission, schools have their capital commission. Right now, the Article 39 and the Article 46s could not support additional debt to cover this.
Right.
So that's why we would, if we want to make this profitable in the 15-year period, we would have to recapture those savings.
Right.
Now, over the 30-year savings, even if we didn't recapture those, we would still save money, just not nearly as much.
Right. And it's worth remembering that in the last two years, the different education institutions have specifically cited the increases in their utility costs as one of the primary reasons.
That's what I was thinking about.
That they asked for more money from us. So it's, that whole issue is very much part of the budget conversations already. And now we'll be able to say, well, look, you know, I mean, I don't have that slide up, but look, your, your utility costs are going down by $90,000 or $130,000. So.
Right.
You know, it's, um, we're, we're already paying those bills, so by knocking those down, we'll, you know, it'll, it'll be helpful in those discussions.
So, so Don, even though, at 2032, we still owe three more years of debt services. We would have an, we've got savings in the bank already.
Correct.
Even though, okay. And now, the, the figures that we're looking at, um, on the savings, does that include, not really include, but maintenance? I know on the slide, the first proposal I saw, it included maintenance in some of the, uh, so, so all these numbers do include maintaining the system?
Correct. So the savings estimates also take into account maintenance and operations for the, for the actual system. I will say, maintenance and operations for solar is very low typically. There's just very few moving parts, so there's not a lot to go wrong. But one thing that we do account for, and you probably, you don't see it here because it's in year 16, is inverter replacement. And that's, that's probably the most common thing that, that does go wrong and that does need to be replaced. But that is, when we look at that 27.2 million lifetime savings, that's factored into that.
Okay.
So we do factor in operation and maintenance over the life of the system.
Right, thank you.
Anything else before I turn it over to Jeremiah?
Thank you, sir.
All right.
So, uh, decision points. As Don mentioned, it's really a matter of the board deciding, you know, which project should be funded, the county or the county and the educational partners, where those debt service payments come from, whether we look to school capital fund or just county funds, or, as Don mentioned, the Buncombe County funds, plus the savings and revenue from those educational partners. Reducing utility costs in educators, in, in their budget requests, requiring that they remit their rebates to us if we do fund these projects. And of course, any, any of those scenarios would involve an MOU with each educational partner, sort of guaranteeing in writing that, that that's how we want to do it, and that they're okay with it, we're okay with it, and that's how that process is going to move forward. Timeline. So the first bullet is today. So obviously, we're here doing that. And depending on, on the outcome of this evening, if we were to move forward, we'd immediately start with the process of getting MOUs in place, notice to proceed and contract. I haven't mentioned this, and I, I remiss, I apologize. The low bid for the project was MB Haynes, which is a name most of you probably know because they're a local company. So that was certainly something we were happy about. Just worked out that way. So, um, so we would, you know, obviously award a contract and move forward with that in August. And starting in September, you know, it's, it's time to hit the ground running and start building these sites. The, the build-out plan currently is to construct one to four sites simultaneously. And it's approximately 18 to 24 months for total completion, which brings, you know, spring or summer of 2022, all systems are commercially operational.
Any, any thought on how the sites would be prioritized?
Actually, yes. The, I don't want to get into, into the weeds too much, but basically, standing metal seam roofs go first. They're easy and can be done very, very quickly. Most of the flat rooftop systems are in that same vein, and so those would get done as well. We also have some standing ground mount systems that we talked about with the county schools. Those would probably go next. And then the very last thing they would do is that we've got a couple of parking canopy systems that are much more complicated and a lot harder to install, and require a lot more engineering work before they can be put on. They would probably go last. So that's kind of, it's more about the system than the site in terms of which, which one goes first. So during the process of pulling all of this together, other, other public entities have expressed interest in this process. And so if the board is interested in pursuing a similar project next year with other public partners, whether it's Airport MSD, UNC Asheville, Housing Authority, below is a, a possible timeline that we would look at in terms of meeting with public agencies, doing site visits, and potentially, if there are county projects involved, submitting those as a part of the CIP project deadline. And then coming in June, again, to review projects as a part of the annual budget process. Just a basic timeline of what the future might look like, should we choose to continue to, to, to do this type of process. That is it for me. I'm happy to answer any additional questions you have.
All right. Thank you, Jeremiah. Thank you, Don.
I've got one more question.
Go ahead.
So Jeremiah, would, would, would this project take care of all the county old buildings? Or there's some more that would, that we could look into?
Oh, there's, yeah, there's plenty.
Okay. So this is only going to take care of, how many county buildings do you think this is taking care of? 14?
We have 14.
Okay, I saw it up there.
They're ours. But we, we have 80 buildings, so.
How many buildings?
Eighty.
Eighty buildings?
Plus, I think 83 of us.
Wow, okay.
So, yeah.
I can see why another project would be in, in line with it.
Absolutely. And frankly, not all of them make sense for solar. And, and so we, we would only bring those forward that do. But yeah, there's definitely more opportunity out there.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question, sir.
Sure.
So at the end of the 30 years.
Sure.
When we replace this, what, what happens to that equipment?
Sure.
Does it go to a, a landfill? And I know we're wanting to be. Have a good environmental impact with the project, but 30 years from now, we don't need to have created a, a, something bad?
So I appreciate you asking that, because it's not something that people bring up very often, but lifecycle costing and the analysis in terms of what happens to solar once its, its useful life has ended. The good news is that the vast majority of it is just simply aluminum, and so it's very recyclable. The part that is slightly more complicated, although it's a very, very small part of it, is the, the crystalline silicone that's a part of the, the actual panels. So there are not great ways at this time to, to dispose of that or to reuse that. But that technology is getting better, and my goodness, hopefully by the, by the end of 30 years, we'll have figured out the best ways to recycle those systems. And 30 years honestly is, is what we expect to be sort of a minimum lifecycle. Most of these systems we're finding last closer to 35 and even 40 years. So I'm, I'm very hopeful that we'll find a good technology to, to get rid of that silicone or reuse that silicone in a more effective way. But most of the, the parts of the system are very, are glass and aluminum and very recycled.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Commissioner, I'd like to make a motion. And Jeremiah, correct me if any of this doesn't sound right. Okay. So the motion is to approve the awarding of a contract to MB Haynes as the lowest responsive bidder for the solar RFP on 40 public facilities. The issuance of a, um, of, of project financing in the amount of $10,283,136, with the plan for that to be financed over a period of 15 years. And so that's the motion. And so I want to say thanks to a lot of people who have worked on this. As Jeremiah said, this has been something we've been working on for quite a while. I think we, we, you know, people were thinking about these kind of ideas for a while, and then we started talking about it formally as a commission a little over a year ago. And, you know, and I think this is a, this is exciting for a number of reasons. You know, we've set these ambitious goals. We've obviously got the landfill project, which is moving ahead. I believe that, that Duke has said that that's likely to go into construction late this year or early next year. That's a very significant project. And, and, but in terms of actually putting solar on our own facilities, so we can use renewable energy on our own actual county facilities, this is the first significant project we're doing to, to advance that goal. And I think it's, um, I think it's all the more exciting that our, our education partners that we work with on our public schools, the Asheville City Schools, Buncombe County Schools, Asheville-Buncombe Technical Community College have come in with us. And I think that having these partners involved, you know, really added a lot of complexity to this project. If we had just said, let's just do it ourself, this probably would have all gone faster. Because if you're, you know, if you're, if you're, if you're just doing, you know, just doing it for your own things, there's less decision-making, less conversations to be had. But I think that we're seeing that taking the time to invite these other public partners into the process with us has really added a lot of value. This is a much more significant project than it would be if we were only doing the county buildings. Really, the schools are the biggest, you know, real estate operators in our community. They've got way more buildings than we do because they've got so many schools to operate, and they're, and a lot of them are big, are big buildings. And they pay a lot of utility costs to operate those buildings. And we, as county taxpayers, have an obligation to make sure those are all paid for. So I really appreciate the County Sustainability Office. I really appreciate. But I know a lot of other departments kind of came together to support the Sustainability Office in this. And the Finance Department did that. I know Public Works has, has really been engaged in a really, a really helpful way. But I also want to thank our other public partners. You know, when we, when we reached out to the city schools and the county schools and AB Tech and said, hey, we have this idea, and come on, let's, let's, you know, let's look at this together. They kind of took a leap of faith with this to a certain extent, because this was the first, you know, like, people have been working on Isaac Dixon for a while, but that's just one building, you know. And that, and that one project has taken, you know, four or five years for those folks to put that together. So the idea of doing something bigger, trying to do it together, none of us really knew how it would turn out. But I really appreciate the schools being willing to kind of go through this process with us. And I think it's, I think it's made the project, you know, a lot more, it's going to achieve a lot more good for our community. And the city of Asheville, too. You know, they've been there the whole way. They're responsible for paying, you know, we don't pay their utility bills. So of course, they're going to have to pay for their own facilities in their budget. And I believe that, from what I've heard, they're prepared to, they've set funds aside to do that. So I want to thank all the partners who've worked on this, and just also the, the citizens who were, who have been involved in this. And, and again, kind of going back to the schools, it was really a lot of the students at a lot of our schools who have been real champions for, for pushing all of us, you know, to really move ahead on this. Because they know that while it's, it's exciting that the financial analysis has turned out to be so attractive for this project, it's going to save us, you know, 15 million dollars over, over the next three decades on our utility costs. You know, they know that climate change is the biggest threat facing their future, and that we have to take it on. And we have to switch over to renewable energy as fast as we can. And that's going to be, you know, one of the biggest undertakings we as a society have, have ever taken on. And this is a, and this is a modest, in the big scheme of things, this is a modest step in that direction. But getting this first project done, I think we've already learned a lot from it. Once we get into partnering with MB Haynes and getting out there, getting these installations done, we are going to come out of this smarter, more experienced. And when we do this again in the future, I think it's going to be even more attractive because, because we'll have done it before and gotten this under our belt. And, and I think it's, it lays the foundation for really exciting opportunities for the future. And as, and as, and as, the, the one challenge I would kind of leave with us is that, as exciting as this is and ambitious in scope, when we look at the need to move to renewable energy, we're still not moving fast enough. We have to continue to look for ways to scale this up because we need to do this as quickly as possible. Time is, time is not on our side. And we have the technology to make this transition happen. And it's projects like this that, that start putting it on the ground. But we're gonna, we're gonna, this is just the first of many such efforts that we're going to need to, to take on, to be a leader in this, in this important effort, which is what I think our community wants us to do. So, and I appreciate all of you for, for kind of taking a leap of faith on this, too. You know, I know I've kind of, you know, kind of, you know, talked about this a lot. And so I appreciate the commission being willing to, you know, let our staff work on this feasibility study, go through this process. So I appreciate all of you as well.
I'd like to second the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
But I would, I would like to say, it's obvious you, in your motion, you said you wanted to fund the full project. But should we not include that, part of your motion is how we're going to get the debt services? Should that not be a part of your motion?
So just to repeat the motion, so it was to be able to issue 10.283,136 million for the debt service for the 40 installations. We will have to pay interest on that, of course, over time. So I think we've got a, some estimates on what that is. But the actual amount that we need to borrow upfront to execute on the contract is, is that amount. Do I have that right, Jeremiah? Okay.
I understand that, sir, but, but, I mean, it's obvious you want to, the decision points that we need to make is you want to either, you want to fund the whole project. So should we not make part of that to how we're going to get the debt services back from our partners? So I, I mean, so that we know with staff that they can go and say, look, we either, next year when you ask for your budget, we're going to reduce, so should that not be a part of it as well?
I'm, I'm happy to have this as part of the, as part of the budget. I think it's kind of assumed that, you know, if we fund this, we've seen the analysis for what the estimated utility savings are going to be. So in subsequent budget years, as we engage with our school partners, it's absolutely expected that this will be part of the discussion in terms of how much money do they need for next year's budget to pay all their operating costs, of which utility payments are, are part of that. And just, are you comfortable having that as part of the, the motion? That, that'll be part of the future just.
Yes.
Budget discussions.
So as one of the things, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. To do that, and I was thinking the same thing when he was making his motion. Can't we just, as a friendly amendment, include the MOUs as part of this? Can we not?
Just include the MOUs, the memorandum, understanding that, that they're going to have to sign. Why don't we just do a friendly amendment where we, where we require the MOUs with the partners? And then we don't have to, then we're not getting into dollar amounts. We're not getting into, you know, next year's budgets and understanding and all that. We're just.
That's, I think that's fine, too. I mean, it's in the staff, I mean, that's, so just sort of per context, to support the full recommendations of the staff report and the process that we would go through to both contract with MB Haynes and to do MOUs with our partner agencies.
Okay. So if you include that language in there, I mean, you're good.
You can do that, Amanda.
Go with that.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Further, further discussion.
Just briefly, I just want to echo the appreciation to the partners and staff involved with this project. And I'm very excited to have the opportunity for this full package and really thrilled with how the numbers came back, really thrilled that this is an opportunity to work with a local company. And also what that means in terms of the jobs and the promise of work for, for folks. I think that's, you know, just an added benefit. And I want to take a moment to recognize the leadership of Chairman Newman in conceiving of and advancing this project, and the leadership of Jeremiah in, in the stewardship of it. This feels like a really significant step for us to be taking in terms of the scope of it, the scale of it, the doors it might open up in terms of future similar projects. And also, you know, makes me think about the resolution we passed about moving towards 100% renewables. And at that time, that felt like a, a long football field to be figuring out how to march down. And this feels like a good day that we're, we're making some progress there. So thank you to full commission for ongoing engagement on this.
So commissioners, can I say, one of the partners is in a room with us tonight. I just want to recognize the new AB Tech president, Dr. John Gossett, is here tonight as one of our partners.
Thank you so much for being here, and congratulations, and we're so excited to have you at AB Tech. So thank you for being here tonight.
And I'd like to echo what Jasmine said in talking about what's great for me is that.
And I'd like to echo what Jasmine said in talking about what's great for me is that long last, we don't have to see the money leave Buncombe County. We can help, we can work through one of our local long-term businesses who are here, they're taxpayers, so we can help them pay their taxes. And when you look at their employees and all, it's a win-win for all of us. Not only, not to mention what we'll save, you know, over the years when it comes to the environment as well as money for all of us.
I've been very fortunate over the last 10 years to have renewable energies in my own home and seeing the benefits of that and knowing that, you know, just on that small scale, what we're contributing to preventing climate change from the speed of it. And taking that to this broader scale is really exciting for me, to be able to take that from what I see on my own home and on my own bills to a much larger scale to our government and the savings long-term for our taxpayers is really exciting. But I have to say, I was most excited that it was a local company who came in to do the work. I think that is really exciting, that it's MB Haynes. We know that they're a great company, and being able to support them is great. But I also want to thank you, Chairman Newman, because I have learned so much about solar over the last few months that I've been sitting up here. And I appreciate your leadership on this. And moving toward that 100% renewable is really exciting this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Joyner, do you have a comment?
Mr. Chair, I just want to remind you, the discussion we had about creating a filter comment.
Thank you so much. I would have totally failed to do that. Thank you so much. Let's go, let's go ahead and do that real quick. And then if there's any other discussion, we can do that. All right. Let me just go through these real quick. It's a couple pages. All right. This is a voicemail from Jenny Lentz from Weaverville. And Jasmine, I might ask you to tag team this a little bit. All right. I implore you to vote yes for the forty solar projects, and then we hope that you will do this again and again and again so that we can step up and do everything we can to fight climate change. Thank you so much for being leaders. All right. The next is an email from Kelsey Wood. Buncombe County Commissioners, I'm writing to ask you all to please approve the 10.2 million bond to fund the installation of solar panels on forty publicly owned buildings. Last year, this county and the city of Asheville both passed resolutions to switch to 100% renewable energy, and this is the necessary first step if we're to reach that goal. The project currently up for consideration will generate nearly 7,000 KW of clean energy and will generate millions of dollars in energy savings over the coming decades. Project will also generate employment and support in the local economy, as the most competitive bid for this project came from an employee-owned company based in Buncombe County. As a parent of children who attend two of the schools that are being considered for rooftop solar, Vance Elementary and Silsa Asheville High, I'm especially excited about the educational benefits to schoolchildren. Not only will they walk into buildings every day that are powered by clean energy and innovative technology, but they will know their community and its leaders care about their future. Now vote like the parent, citizen, leaders you are. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for voting yes on the solar bond. All right. The next is an email from Leah, or Lee Dutton. Hello. I'm writing to ask for your vote to install the solar panels on the county-owned buildings. This will move Buncombe County closer to reaching the 100% renewable energy goal, reduce utility bills over 30 to 40 years, and provide good local jobs. Thanks for your consideration. The next one, dear Commissioners, as a parent and resident of Buncombe County, I want you to approve the 10.2 million solar bond proposal. This, with this funding, we can get Buncombe County to the 100% renewable energy goal, invest in the local economy, and save money on utility bills. Please vote yes on Tuesday. The solar proposal will install about 6,700 KW of solar on forty schools and buildings in Buncombe County, equivalent of taking, powering 677 homes entirely with solar each year. Since these solar energy systems are expected to last 30 to 40 years, this is the equivalent of taking 677 homes off the grid. The solar panels in the proposal would be installed by an employee-owned company based right here in Buncombe County, showing support for the local economy. Prices offered to install these solar projects are millions of dollars cheaper than what the county staff first estimated, and the energy savings from the solar panels will actually save the county one million annually over the life of the solar panels and energy costs. Buncombe County made a commitment in 2017 to move our county to 100% renewable energy. Voting yes on these projects is an important step to start making progress on this commitment. Thanks for your consideration. Would you like to read a few thousand?
Sure. The next comment.
The next comment comes from Linda Alfredson. This is a necessary step towards saving us from ourselves. I have installed solar on two rental properties I own as a start. Please vote for this project. Our children's lives depend on it. Thank you. The next message is from Carrie Richmond. Dear County Commissioners, I am a resident of West Asheville, and I'm so excited to hear of the project to put solar panels on many of our public buildings, including my child's school, the soon-to-be-renamed Vance Elementary. I'm so proud of our awesome city and county for leading the way on sustainability. I urge you to vote in favor of the bond for solar energy. Thanks. Next comment is from Ian Canary King. Hello, Commissioners. I am a resident of Buncombe County. I'm writing to urge you to approve the $10.2 million solar bond proposal. It will be good for the environment, good for our long-term budget, and good for our local economy. Thank you. Next one comes from Kathy Holt. Dear Commissioners, I am a resident of Buncombe County. I am urging you to approve the $10.2 million solar bond proposal. This funding can help Buncombe County move towards the 100% renewable energy goal and invest in the local economy while saving money on utility bills. How does saving the county $1 million a year in energy costs for 30 to 40 years sound? Please vote yes on Tuesday. The solar proposal would install about 6,700 kilowatts of solar photovoltaics, sorry, is that right? Photovoltaics on forty schools and buildings in Buncombe County. The solar panels would be installed by an employee-owned solar company based right here in Buncombe County, thus supporting the local economy. The prices offered to install these solar projects are millions of dollars cheaper than what county staff first estimated. Buncombe County made a commitment in 2017 to move our county to 100% renewable. Voting yes to these projects is an important step to start making progress on this commitment. Thank you for reading my comments. Again, this is a win-win proposal. I think there's one more. This is from Jean Hussey, first grade.
First grade.
I think in first grade, or maybe a first grade teacher? I'm not sure. How exciting it would be for Vance Elementary to get solar panels. The benefits of having solar panels on government buildings, including schools, would be great for the environment and human health. Asheville gets a lot of sun year-round, making Buncombe County a perfect place to install solar panels. Our magnet at Vance Elementary is ecology, and what a great learning opportunity solar power would be for our students. We will be able to use the data from the onsite solar energy systems to teach math, learn more about energy through watching firsthand how shifting panel angles can affect power production, science in regards to simple machines and sun and earth, research and more. Drawing less from fossil fuels will positively influence the impact we have on the environment and student education. I am thrilled this opportunity is coming to our community and our school. I believe that's the last comment on the topic.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. All right. Commission, further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment that when, when they, I got the first proposal that I sit in on, it was just the county. And, and when I looked at those numbers and it said 25 years, we would still be paying for a system in five more years. To see this come in and know that after the 12th year, we have a positive cash flow coming back as savings, I, I am so glad those numbers came back. I'm glad we're using a, a local company to put some people, you know, to, to work. And I appreciate the staff. I got to talk to Jeremiah a little bit this afternoon, and I just, this is just a, a great thing, so.
Thank you. Thank you. And I would say, you know, that I appreciate the staff being very conservative in their initial estimates. It's always good to be conservative, and then when things come in better, you know, you always want to see that instead of getting something too idealistic, and then it, it comes in higher. So I appreciate their, the careful approach they've taken on this. Commissioner Presley?
Yeah. I just want to thank the staff also, because echo what Commissioner Penland said. From 25 years down to 12, make this work, that I, I can support it 100%. And it is, it's overdue, and we need to do it. And we made a commitment in 2017 that we would be looking at this, and we're doing it. On the, only negative thing about all this is what we went through the last five days of the emails that have come in, to where we can't keep up, I talked to Commissioner Whiteside yesterday, and we was both trying to find an email that was sent out on another subject, and trying to go through the 480 that we got, that all they done was just paste it and post it and copy. And we're, next time, please, just send one and put your name underneath it, where we can do it that way. But, Ronnie, good speech on that. Know you're in the solar business, and hopefully, everything that has been said tonight comes true.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Presley. All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you again, Don and Jeremiah, for a great presentation. All right. Next item is the Crabtree Iron Duff Fire Protection Services Agreement. And it looks like Michael Frue will be presenting this.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Michael Frue here. I'm pinch-hitting for Tim Love, who's on a well-deserved vacation with his family this week. Just to back up a little bit, in 2015, we worked to consolidate all our rural fire protection districts into Buncombe County Fire and Rescue Service Districts. We contracted with the volunteer fire departments with 20 contracts for the 20 service districts. Those are all in place from July 1st, 2016 till end of June of 2021. One of the things that's happened is that up there in the Lester Fire District, a community has been developed, I don't know how long, for how many years it's been in development, but it's Mount Soma Community in the northwest part of the county. And there enters Crabtree Iron Duff Fire Protection Service District. And Max, if you can go to the next slide there. So we have that district. We have approximately 60 parcels in the Mount Soma Community District that are best served from the Haywood County side of the mountain. This is way up in northwest part of Sandy Mush. You get off Sandy Mush Road and go to Garrett Cove Road. And once you get up there, I understand there's less than a goat's trail worth of road for anyone from the Lester side of the fire district to get up there to service them. So sometime back, Tim and I were speaking with the chief for Lester Fire, thinking that, you know, if Crabtree Iron Duff is providing the service, they ought to get paid for it. So that's why we're here today, to make sure that those parcels get the best service possible. And I, as I understand it, this is like a 30-minute savings by being able to call Crabtree Iron Duff rather than relying on Lester Fire to go all the way around the mountain. This is like, I think it's on exit 26.
Can you go ahead and advance the slide?
Yeah, one more slide, please. Yes. So that, that shows where it is in relation to Crabtree Fire District. That number three on the slide is at exit 24, I believe, after Canton and after the Waynesville exit. And again, it, it'll save about 30 minutes of time. If you could forward again, Max. So again, it's just asking for, and this, just the, the rate that they've determined and which Lester agrees is $20,000, is for a one-year term, July 1st till June 30, 2021. And the next slide, as to the, what we're requesting, is just to authorize the county manager to enter into an agreement with Crabtree Iron Duff Volunteer Fire Service District. This is the same agreement which our other partners have, and also to authorize the county manager to do a modification with Lester Fire. And that's just for Lester Fire to acknowledge that they don't get all the proceeds from the 14-cent tax out there, which is not changing, but $20,000 of that will be used to provide the service from the Haywood County side. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
So once we make this motion, then that's for every year?
We're gonna, it's going for one year, July 1st this year till June 30th of 2021. All of the fire service districts are up for renewal at that time. So we want to keep them all in sync. But the idea would be to stick with Crabtree going forward.
Do you need one or two motions?
Uh, one motion will do fine. It's written there. But just for those two requests, authorize the county manager to enter into a new agreement with Crabtree Iron Duff and to modify the Lester Fire agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
Got a motion? Got a motion in a second.
Yeah.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Frue.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next up, Matt Cable is going to present a resolution authorizing the county manager to execute an agreement with the city of Asheville as direct recipient of. FTA funds for funds under the CARES Act.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you tonight is related to funding that has been made available through the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, or CARES Act, funding. This is funding that's been directed through the FTA, the Federal Transit Administration. The FTA was allocated 25 billion in funding, and that funding is intended to assist agencies in preventing, preparing for, and responding to COVID-19. Buncombe County's sub-allocation of those CARES Act funds is $2.4 million. It's actually $2,462,856, to be exact. There is a timeline included in your request for board action that describes the process by which that funding was allocated and the steps by which the apportionment for Buncombe County was determined. The region in total will be receiving 8.6 million, again, of which 2.4 million will be allocated to Buncombe County. At this point, the city of Asheville manager has been authorized to apply for CARES Act funds by the city council and to enter into sub-recipient and sub-allocation agreements with the various sub- recipients in the region. Buncombe County will work with the city of Asheville and the NCDOT to program those funds. We don't have 100% clarity typically with federal dollars. You have what are referred to as circulars, which are multi-hundred-page documents that explain how to utilize those funds. So we're going to be working with the direct recipients, that include the city of Asheville and NCDOT, to determine how that funding can be programmed, at which point we can come back with budget information on those funds. But in order to access that funding, the county must enter into the sub-recipient and sub-allocation agreement, that's a mouthful, before it can access and program the funding. And that funding would go to support mountain mobility operations, in particular, any of the urban level of services that we're providing. The recommended motion and requested action is to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute an agreement with the city of Asheville as the direct recipient of Federal Transit Administration funds for funds under the CARES Act, Section 5307 program. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have about their request for board action. There is included a, a copy of the resolution, as well as the draft sub-recipient and sub-allocation agreement provided by the city of Asheville.
So I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute the agreement with the city of Asheville.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All right. Jennifer Barnett's going to come up and present three different budget amendments. The first is, microphone's off, you can't. Okay. Thank you, sorry about that. The first is for community paramedics, paramedicine grant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So you heard from Emergency Services Director and Staff during the month of June during a briefing meeting surrounding the specific elements for the community paramedicine program. And this, we are bringing forward to you this evening, is the budget amendment to be able to budget the grant revenue from the Dogwood Trust in support of the community paramedicine grant. And then the outlining areas for expenditures that would be anticipated for a total amount of $382,000, both revenues and expenditures, which will be in our multi-year grants projects fund. Okay?
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we accept the budget amendment and accept the grant.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman Newman, we'll need one additional motion for approval, and that will be for the three grant-funded paramedicine positions that are time-limited and specific to this grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the positions.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you for getting us to do that right. And next?
So Commissioner, can I have her jump ahead and do the Methodist grant first, and then when she steps down? I need for her to leave by 7:15, so if we can do that, then come back to the sheriffs.
That's fine.
Okay. So if we are advancing to the budget amendment request as it relates to the Methodist Home for Children, you've heard us come forward a couple of times for this particular contract. If you'll just recall that we are a pass-through entity, a fiscal agent on behalf of the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, where dollars are provided to the Methodist Home in support of the Western Area Multipurpose Juvenile Crisis and Assessment Center. We are bringing forward this budget amendment to request to budget the $900,000, that is the anticipated contract amount, for their fiscal year 2021 contract.
So I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, we're going to go back and do the two sheriff's budgets items. Sheriff Miller, thank you for being with us.
Good evening. Had a long day today, so I apologize. So good evening, Commissioners. Under the scope of one Buncombe, we, as elected officials, share the responsibility to seek ways to serve and protect our community citizens through community engagement and crime prevention. We therefore bring you two grants awards for your approval tonight. The first one would be the Governor's Highway Safety Program, the DWI Task Force, in the amount of $401,000. Keep in mind, no county match is required for the first year of this grant. One second. So the Governor Highway Safety Program is an annual opportunity which we hope will reduce fatalities from driving and alcohol-related accidents by targeting, by a target of 25%. Currently, Buncombe County ranks eighth in overall driving fatalities, 11th in impaired driving vehicle accident statewide. This grant will fund three new positions, a sergeant and two deputies, three new vehicles, and related outfit costs for video and communications, and a $10,000 in training. This year's grant budget starts October 1st and continues through September 30th, 2021, as illustrated. Mr. Chairman, we request approval of this grant and welcome any questions the board may have regarding the Governor Highway Safety Program.
All right, one process question. So this will also require two, two different elements, and do these need to be two separate motions?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll ask a question, sir. Sheriff, the, the three positions, and I know we had the task force that were joint with the City of Asheville. So are, so are those three positions that we're asking for, did, did the city pull out of the DWI Task Force?
Yes.
They did. So these three positions are basically their two, their two officers and that supervisors, what we're putting in with this grant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because we have one of the, I mean, we got stories about how our task force here operated in Buncombe County, so. So I just wanted to make sure that, and I thank them for, for keeping our highway safe. But I just wanted to make sure that these three were placing what the city had pulled out.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So we need a motion?
Is there a motion to approve the acceptance of the grant?
So move the 401,080 is what we're doing?
Yeah.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and second to approve the acceptance of the grant.
Grant, yeah.
Further discussion?
Just a question of clarification. This grant is a 12-month grant, and there's the opportunity at the end of that 12 months to renew. But in year two, there would potentially be some county funding involved at some match level. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay, but for this, for the year coming, it would be 100% grant-funded?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, and I mean, you know, the way these grants typically work that are, you know, for a year, you know, when the sheriff comes next year, I mean, he may or may not, or want that as part of it, or it may be automatic. None of these things are really automatic, you know, when it comes, I mean, they're, they're really not. But, but, but you're right, we are doing this for, this, we are only getting reimbursed for the year, yeah.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve the three new positions?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right?
Secondly, we bring to you a highly competitive award, which had 1,100 applicants from the United States Department of Justice Community Oriented Policing. In other words, a COPS grant. This program is in the amount of 375,000 over the next three years. This is a grant that speaks to the 21st century policing, and I would tell you that's, that's period number four of the community engagement and the crime reduction. With these funds, we'll be able to hire three detectives, two undercover narcotics agents, and one arson major task detective. Why is this grant important? There are several reasons. Major highways 26 and 40 run through Buncombe County, creating an abundance of opportunities for drug trafficking to have easy access to our community. When I took office, I realized that these drugs was more of a regional crime, meaning that we have the need to go from county to county if need be, and that was part of why I reached out to other sheriffs in an effort to do a partnership, if you will, that would allow us to follow the drugs. It's not just happening in Buncombe County. It happens in Buncombe County, and it goes to Haywood County and other counties, so we need to be able to follow that. So in addition to that, this is one of the key factors in deciding about our separation of the Buncombe County Task Force, and some of you refer to that as BCAT. And the city, again, separated from BCAT, and it took a total of five officers from the task force. And so this will give us the opportunity to supplement, you know, what we currently have with two additional detectives, if you will. Commissioners, you may have heard of the recent drug trafficking arrests and items retrieved from the crime scene, like the guns, drugs, and cash, as evidenced in this slide from a recent arrest. We also had an arrest last week to a major fentanyl dealer. There's significant work to be done here in Buncombe County. A recent focus on COVID-19 crisis and other national concerns have lessened our attention on what, in my opinion, is still a critical opiate epidemic. We continue to see overdose deaths, overdose deaths in our community at rates greater than what we have ever experienced in our history, as well as related violent crimes. We must continue to strategize, pursue every possible avenue, from education to being rehabilitation to mental health services to crime prevention for our community. So as you can see, the trends of more violent crimes are building. We believe this grant enhances our ability to deliver more closed cases. Finally, we currently have less than 30% arrest conviction rate for arson-related incidents or crimes. With the support of this grant, this will enable us to hopefully do better. The issues that this grant will address also affects other community programs and initiatives, making its impact even greater. To summarize, this COPS grant provides $375,000 for needed personnel in both the BCAT and in Criminal Investigation Division. It is in alignment when addressing the current countywide opiates crisis. The program provides funding for over a period of 36 months, starting with the Commissioner's approval tonight. The 2021 COPS hiring program brings estimated revenue of $139,715 in that first year. If you approve, local matching funds will be transferred from the sheriff's office 2021 approved budget. We're asking for no additional general funds appropriation the first year. We believe this grant is a good way to prepare and keep safe the communities that have placed their trust in our leadership. Mr. Chairman, we request approval of this COPS grant funding and welcome any questions from the Commissioners.
All right, thank you, Sheriff.
Chairman, I'm going to move approval. I'd like to make a comment with my approval if I can. So Sheriff, I want to thank you and your, your officers for what they do for Buncombe County. I want you to know that many people pray for you and your safety and your, your men and women, and I do. And I'm grateful for that. And along with, along with that, if that was all I did, that would be, that would be good, but as a Commissioner, you know, you require support. And so tonight, I'm happy to, to make that motion to, to support you and your, your men and women. But again, thank you.
Thank you. I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion and second. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say, echo what Mr. Belcher said. Sheriff, I, I do appreciate, and I have the opportunity to work alongside some of the finest men and women in law enforcement.
Yes, sir.
And I, and I appreciate, you know, them and, and doing this here for our, for our citizens, and they, we've, we've got a really fine sheriff's office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Sheriff.
How you doing, ma'am?
I'm good. How are you, sir?
Doing well.
Always good to have you, and thank you, Elizabeth. So I will echo that as well, to say thank you and appreciation to you and your team and staff for the hard and important work you do each day. I am going to vote against this one, and I'd like to just take a moment to explain why. Initially, in some discussions, I asked if there was an opportunity to delay this particular vote until we had an opportunity to have some further discussion. I understand there's a time sensitivity to this, so that we'll vote tonight. And the reason I don't feel ready to vote for it is just because I, I would like to situate any conversations we're having about future increases to the sheriff's budget in a broader conversation about the direction that we're heading in, the direction that the sheriff's department's heading in, and that our community's heading in. And I know those are conversations that you are having every day. You're having them with us, you're having them with community members. And my request would be, if there's a time when it's convenient for you and your staff to actually do a more formal update to commission and thus to our community about 21st century policing and what you all have accomplished in the last 18 months, which is considerable, and also where you're thinking we head next. I benefit from getting to be in regular communication with you, as I know other Commissioners are, so. But I'm hearing from so many community members with those questions, that I feel like if we can create some space for that conversation, and I will leave it to you and county staff to schedule a time when that makes the most sense. I know there's a lot on everyone's plate right now. So for me, as I think, you know, we just passed a budget, as I think about fiscal years to come, I'd, I'd really like to be not just fully briefed about that bigger picture, but also have the opportunity for us to have some discussions at the commission level about things like, you know, if, if we are able to maintain the lower population in the detention center, which I hope we'll be able to, what that means about staffing structure, about where the savings from that would be directed. So I recognize the important work that's done under, under this branch of the Sheriff's Department, but I just want to take a few minutes to explain the rationale behind my, my vote on this. Thank you.
I would like to comment that I'm very excited about the opportunity to, one, you know, meet with the Commissioners and meet with our community when they start talking about the 21st century policing and what that means to our, not only to the sheriff's office, but to our county and the community which we serve. So I'm excited about that opportunity.
I have one question, just from a budget process standpoint. So there's, there's not a request for additional general fund appropriation in this fiscal year to meet the required match, but it's a three-year grant. So I know the further you get out into the future, the less it's possible to know exactly what's going to be going on. But so when we get to next year, is it fair to say, is it accurate to say, Ms. Pender, that, you know, that, that match will have to come from somewhere? Whether it's an increased general fund appropriation, or whether it comes from, like, right now, that it actually is those savings from the detention facility, population reduction, and the lower healthcare costs that allows this to be kind of paid for with that match. But in terms of next year, I mean, that'll just be a conversation we, we will jointly have with the Sheriff's Department in the budget process. It doesn't presume that the county will increase general fund investments. We, we might, or we might not. We just, again, that's, that's, we just, we just voted on a budget. Am I, am I thinking about that in the, in the right way? This doesn't affirmatively obligate the county to appropriate additional funds in the context of the whole budget next year. That'll, this will be part of the budget discussion in next year's cycle.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'll also comment, I, you know, I also wish we had a little more time to talk about this one, just because I think it's, it is touching on, you know, I mean, it's just, as you all know better than anyone, you know, the world, you know, we're, we're all talking about public safety, thinking about it, looking at it differently than we were two months ago. All these issues have been elevated in the public's, you know, attention. And, you know, I'm personally a lot more skeptical that this, you know, then we've been fighting this war on drugs for, for forever, right? And I'm skeptical that it's the best investment of our dollars, frankly. We have a huge opioid problem, no question about it. It's killing people, it's taking lives left and right, way too early, and ruining many others. But there's a lot of different strategies that we need to be pursuing to tackle it. We don't have enough treatment. There's, there's so many different needs to, to go about this. So I'm, I'm, I do question whether this is the, whether we can, you know, I, I don't, I don't doubt that the fine men and women who work for the Sheriff's Department will, with these additional resources, be able to hold some additional people accountable. But I just, I worry about the other parts of the strategy that we're not investing enough in. And the dollars just can't be in two places at the same time. So I wish we had more time to talk about this particular, particular one, to kind of dive into some of those questions in more depth. But I do understand that there is, you know, basically, we need to make this decision tonight, so.
It's time sensitive.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna respectfully vote no on this one, because, with the reasons that Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Fraro articulated. But I appreciate the hard work y'all are doing and the, the reasons for this, so I just wanted to share those comments. Other, other comments from Commissioners?
I want to make a comment if I, if I can. We can, we can sit up here, and we can watch things and listen to things, and Sheriff Miller can come in here, and he can tell us what he's doing. But, but I would like to challenge you, my colleagues, to find a deputy sheriff and go ride with him. Just go ride with him, pick any one of them, if, if that's allowed, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
And, and see the work that they do, and see exactly, so that when we're up here and we're, we're not seeing presentations of what they're doing, you actually can say, hey, wow, wow. So, and, and watch how quickly something can turn. And, and so I would challenge you to find a sheriff's deputy and, and pick a time, and I'm not saying 1 o'clock in the afternoon, pick something, you know, and just, and just, anywhere in the county. And, and see that you could possibly, in this county, as a sheriff's deputy, be in Alexander, North Carolina, and have to respond to Broad River because another deputy needs help. So those are some of the things that... So those are some of the things that we have to look at, you know, when we have our citizens and our deputies that may be in another part of the county by themselves, knowing that their nearest backup is across the county, please pick a deputy and go ride with them, if you would do that.
Commissioner Penland, I have. It was a really instructive and informative experience. I've ridden with APD, I've ridden with the Charlotte Police Department. All those things have taught me a lot. I've spent many hours talking with Sheriff Miller, that's taught me a lot, and I've listened to many community members, that's also teaching me a lot. So I would respectfully ask that in the future, you consider that your colleagues on Commission have done their due diligence and are taking a very deep dive on one of the most critical policy issues of our time. This is not easy stuff. I don't think anyone out there knows quite the answer. But I want to make clear that my engagement on this issue is based on personal experience, knowledge, research, and a very earnest effort to weigh a very difficult issue. I heard you say recently, Sheriff Miller, that you think Buncombe County is a place that can crack the code on how we heal our community, how we figure out new models of public safety, how we're willing to be innovative and bold, and I know that you mean those words and you're doing the work every day. So that's what's going on here, and I think we need to move past a very tired script in which if you have a conversation where you disagree, it means you're anti-law enforcement, or if you vote for this, which I know many people will tonight, it means you're opposed to reform. That's not going to work. If we want change, we have to be able to really dig in with each other, we have to be willing to disagree, and we have to rest assured that we're all working from a basis of information, knowledge, and commitment to the best solutions. So I take it a little personally when you make an assumption like that, and would request that you don't do that.
All right, further discussion?
I came in this evening prepared to vote differently. However, after doing more research, talking to Sheriff Miller at length, I am changing my vote to support this. After really listening to the sheriff explain his plan and how this addresses the ongoing and increasing opioid crisis, and hearing from people who have been impacted, who have lost children and family members by the opioid crisis, I had to take that into account as I'm thinking about how I'm voting this evening. And I really appreciate what you just said, Commissioner Beach Farrar, that a vote for this is not a vote against reform. That is absolutely not it, and I know that you, Sheriff Miller, are committed to reform in 21st century policing, and I look forward to moving forward with your plans on that as well. But I'm listening to the folks who have lost family members and been impacted, and I hope that as we do move forward, that we will be able to look at alternative methods to address the opioid crisis and more treatment as part of the longer-term strategy.
You know, I was with Sheriff Miller the other night, not in the car. We were meeting about something else, and it was interesting. We couldn't get through our meeting for calls that he was getting, and I can't go into a lot of them, because somebody's life could be jeopardy there because of a large drug bust in Buncombe County and what they were going through. And, you know, I've learned to respect what the deputies are going through to keep us safe. But on the other hand, too, I have a good friend of mine who retired from CDC in Atlanta, and he spent a lot of time, we've had a lot of conversation, because he had a son who died from drug overdose, and I've seen what happens. I've seen what happens to relatives of mine and all. And I agree, we've got to make some changing in the way in policing today. We've got to, but we're not there yet. And I agree with Commissioner Beach Farrar that we need to talk about 21st century policing, drill down and see where we're going, but at this point in time, I will vote for the grant tonight.
All right. Mr. Presley hasn't spoken yet.
Just make a comment back to Commissioner Penland and all. I've rode with every sheriff all the way back in the eighties of Bucklada, and every sheriff since then, and numerous deputies, and seen it. And I've been put on the side of the road, you know, in a safe place. Hey, we're getting out of here because I don't feel safe with you in here. And I've seen from the eighties, nineties, oh, and ten, how much it is changing in Buncombe County. So I want you to know I'm going to support this right here, and so you're the next sheriff I'm going to have to ride with.
Looking forward to it.
Okay.
All right, Commissioners, I appreciate everyone's comments on this thing, everyone's spoken. We're ready to vote?
Sure.
All right. This is for the motion to accept the grant. Okay, we'll do another motion after this.
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion to accept the grant and the county's matching fund associated requirements, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the positions?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Sheriff, we appreciate you. Thank you for being here tonight to answer the questions and talk us through these two requests.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Board, we need to talk about Board appointments, and Lamar's going to be helping us out with some of these.
So we just want to start at the top and go through them, Chairman?
Hold on, just a second, please.
I think that's what we need to do.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm just looking for my list here. All right, so for the Asheville Airport Authority, which is at the top of the list, Carl Ricker is seeking a reappointment.
I'll nominate Carl Ricker.
I'll second.
Carl, he was just put in place as someone that come off, he was not in for a full term, was he?
Right, yeah.
I believe Chairman Gant come off and he replaced him, didn't he? I know that he has not served the two years. This has just been a short replacement.
We'll check. So this will be serving, this will be for a full term, but if he was only served part of a first term, I believe under our policies, is he eligible for another term after this one? I honestly don't remember what the details of the policy are. We basically say two terms, but to your point, if he hadn't served a full term, he might be able to apply again in four years.
Yes, the partial term does not count as a term.
All right.
Right.
All right, so all in favor of appointing Carl for a full first term, in essence?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up is the Audit Committee, and we have one appointment and one applicant.
I'll nominate Glenda Wiener.
Second. Sorry.
All right. All in favor of appointing Glenda Wiener?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Forgot to vote, I'm sorry, I meant to vote aye.
You can still vote, okay.
I missed a beat, I went somewhere else for a second.
You went somewhere. That happens to me, Commissioner.
Okay. All right, now we've got several more, and I'm going to ask Mr. Joyner to help us out with some of these, so, and maybe some others have too, but so the next one is the Vance.
Before we do that, I know the Vance is going to be quite a little while. I'd like to go ahead on the School Capital Fund Commission.
Okay.
Yourself and Joe Belcher, Brownie Newman, Joe Belcher, I'd like to nominate to go ahead, if y'all would like to.
That's right, you all. Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. And just let me comment on that. So we talked about this some at the last School Capital Fund Commission, because there's several of us who, you know, this thing got created just a couple of years ago, now people's terms are coming up. So I got appointed before Mr. Belcher did, so I've actually served two terms. Now, but what makes this a little different than our normal terms is that the terms are just two years, whereas Airport Authority, most of our boards are usually three or four years. So the School Capital Fund Commission, I'm certainly willing to continue serving, that's the board's pleasure. I think they believe that a little bit more longevity than a maximum period of four years would be desirable on that board. So, but I did just want to note it, since we do have a policy on terms, but these terms are much shorter than our typical terms. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
Yeah, we also had a discussion, just for information's sake, that when these were appointed, they all come due at the same time. So within the Commission, you know, we're probably going to make a recommendation that they be, you know, an odd term, an even term, so that we're, you know, some people are coming off, you know, or have the, or that we don't turn the, all the board in one time, you know, at one time, so.
Right, so we'll report back on that. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we come back to the Vance Task Force, and Mr. Joyner, is there anything you'd like to share with us? Has everyone gotten a copy of this printout of candidates for the task force and some of the, at least preliminary feedback from Commissioners about who, some of the, the decision tonight is who to interview, not to appoint. Does everyone have a copy of this? And Mr. Joyner, could you articulate what this represents? Did everyone's input get reflected on this? Or DK, if you could help us out with this, just kind of talk us through this chart.
Some of us are rebels, so we didn't.
Yeah, you did it your way.
Okay.
So what you have in front of you is the larger document has all of the applicants, so 116 folks applied for this task force, so you have that, and we provided some demographic information as well. And then on the other document, the first sheet is representative of average score of two Commissioners. I believe there were some other Commissioners that just sent in their 20 and didn't do it within the software. So this is just in average of both Commissioner Jasmine Beach Farrar and Commissioner Edward's scores.
Okay, so like I couldn't get the software to work, so I just emailed mine to Lamar, so like it doesn't reflect, it just reflects two Commissioners' initial feedback. Okay, okay. Well, let me just ask one question to the Commission. I think we talked about interviewing up to 20 candidates. Is that still the number that the Board wants to focus on? Because that's the decision we need to make tonight, who are the 20? Or is there, anybody want to make a strong argument for doing a different number? Or is 20 what we want to do? This is all going to be a resume in the next couple of weeks, so.
How many is supposed to be on the task force?
There are a total of 12, but six appointed by the Commission.
We need to do six.
We need to do six. So six from the city, six from us, is that what's going?
And the recommendation is that each body appoints two alternatives, because we'll be spending a significant amount of time, and just in case people drop out and can't continue, so.
So really eight.
Six, six appointments and two alternatives.
We probably should keep 20 then, just to make sure we have a big enough pool, so we actually need to appoint eight, to make sure we have, you know, a good number to choose from. So I'll just pull that question back in unless somebody wants to.
So I just got a couple of questions, so I'll wait just a minute. Okay, so DK, you're over this, you're kind of trying to handle all this.
Yes, sir.
So I just got some, you know, just some thoughts on the, you know, when I'm looking at the list, and, you know, I would want to make sure that, just a couple of things, thinking out loud, I would want to make sure that the African-American community is represented in this well. When I glanced through the list, not so much. I mean, just, I'm just being straight up, you know, there's just not many, you know, when we list, it's mostly, you know, white people that are Caucasian, white, as they listed. So I'd want to, I'd just give that input. And the other is, I was having a conversation with a Commissioner earlier, and I kind of liked the thought, you know, people are going to fall on two sides on the Vance monument, and this is what I've heard from the public, you're going to hear, I've heard a lot of people say about repurposing, repurposing, different vision, repurposing. And I've heard some, you know, that just wanted, you know, want it gone. It seemed to me it'd be good if we had a good mix of both, so they could have a good conversation about it, you know? So if we could have the African-American community represented, and we could also have a good mix of those, I don't know how we'd get there, but I just think it'd be really good if we could. Then you're going to have some people that's actually got to kind of give and move, and, you know, maybe have some consistency building and come out of it with a great result, so. That's my two cents. And I did not, I did not, I had a couple of names, but I did not go through the list, and it might change based on my comments tonight.
The other thing I want to make note of is that the city had 106 applications, and my understanding is their intent is to appoint on the 28th, so they will appoint before this Commission does, and we think that there may be some duplications, so we're going to double-check that to make sure, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good to do. So what's our deadline on this?
Well, we need to make the appointments at our next meeting in two weeks. So really, we need a process to choose who we're going to interview, and then over the next two weeks, do the Zoom interviews, so that two weeks from tonight, we will vote to appoint our six plus two.
Wow.
So really, ideally, we would come out of this meeting tonight with a list of 20 people to interview.
Our Commissioners, if you want to take the night and do the homework, you sent yours to Lamar, we can load them into the system and generate this document with all the scores. Now that we have those, we can actually key them into the system. Some volunteer and staff to do some like work for you.
Okay, so under that system, basically, all the Commissioners need to send in their info, whoever are the 20 applicants who received the most votes, so to speak, from Commissioners, those would be the 20 we interview?
Yeah, I think the system is complicated in such, you have to actual, actually score based on criteria. So by just sending in the name.
How about if, send in with a score between zero and one?
Correct.
Correct. And one being the best score, and you can give multiple people ones. You give all 20 ones if you wanted, but if you really want to delineate who your top eight are, those might be your ones, and then you might go down to .9, .8, et cetera, till you hit 20. And I think that would roughly replicate what the software does.
Okay. I think I understand that. Should we, who should we call if we're having tech issues on this software? Is it you, DK?
Angeline Johnson.
Okay.
She's prepared to support you with software.
We will send you the email information again, and if you can send that to us, we can send that back out, and then you can send us the 20, that way we can schedule the interviews before the next meeting.
Is everyone on the Commission comfortable with that process?
Absolutely not, but I'll participate.
What's, what kind of?
Those things just make my brain explode, but, you know, the process, but, I mean, I just, I just don't.
My problem was, and we used it for pre-K, I had no problem with it, but I couldn't get in this one.
Is that how y'all did in pre-K?
Yeah. It worked out.
Okay.
I'll check with Angela, maybe something I'm doing wrong.
I mean, I'll do it.
At the end of the day, if you need to, you can come down to the county office, and someone will sit down with you, and you can enter the data in with them here. I did have some technical problems with it, too, but I'm not, I'll probably figure it out. We should set a deadline for everyone getting this information in.
Yeah.
So there are a lot, so would it be okay if we said, today's Tuesday, if we said Thursday by noon?
It's Thursday.
So you don't have to get it all done tomorrow, because it is a lot of information, so is that doable?
I'm actually, it's actually not doable for me, not because I don't want to do it, I just, I'm not here, so I can, I'll, by when?
I was going to say Thursday at noon.
Yeah, I'll try, I'll give a shot.
I do mine tomorrow.
All right, let's really, really try to get it in by then, and then the interviews will be set up via Zoom, probably for next week. Is that right?
We can set them up for the following week.
You're going to get times? Do you want to give us some times, block out times that we can hold on your calendars?
Yeah, let's look real quick, Commissioners, about what days are, make sure we don't pick a time that's not possible for someone.
Afternoons work for me, mornings don't work.
So any afternoon?
For me.
So are we doing the score, and Jasmine, what you're saying is, instead of what's on right now, we're going to go down and do every one of nine, eight?
Well, I think there's two options. One is.
I like that option better.
I think, the paper applications don't exist anywhere. Do they exist anywhere? The paper applications?
Of these 116?
Yeah. I'm just trying to.
No, not all of them. Not all of them were paper applications.
So to read the application, you do have to log in. But you could just log in, read the applications, and then use a paper scoring system, where you only submit your top 20. If you don't want to, it becomes a bit laborious if you're scoring online, because you have to, that's what makes it take longer. It's actually, it's a very quick application, so if you're just reading them in the system, that's quick. And then you could just generate your list on paper and email that in. Just using those zero to one system.
Or if you wanted to come down, like, be offered, and have someone sit with you.
But I think we all need to be doing the same thing, right? Because Jasmine and Amanda's already done it one way. And if we do it a different way, then how's the score going to come out?
Because it's just, when we did it, it just generated a score between zero and one. So as long as you submit scores between zero and one, they can be added into the scoring we did.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
It's not, it's a little different than, everything was so weighted with early childhood, where it was like, if you did one question, it, but this is a fairly simple process, where the scores we generated were anywhere from zero to one. So as long as your scores are between zero and one, someone, I'm doing this on the fly. If this is wrong, someone jump in, but I think that.
So I think that's the outcome, right? If you do, if you score the criteria, it will give you somewhere between zero and one for each candidate. So if you don't want to actually input it in the software, and you just want to review the applications and score your top 20 somewhere between zero and one, we can figure out how to average it across the commission.
Okay.
With one being the best, zero being, they didn't get any points, or any part of a point.
.5, .9, .8, .7.
Yeah. Right, okay. All right, we can do this.
So Chairman Newman?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to, I think you only gave me five individuals. Are you going to do yours again, or add to your list?
Let's ask that, like, yeah, I mean, I, there were, you know, there were seven or eight people I really liked. I mean, there are a whole, and I'll just say, there's a ton of great people stepped up for this.
Good people.
But I had to say seven or eight that I felt would be best to have on there. Is it okay to just do the ones you like the most, or do you have to do 20? Does it mess up the process if you don't do 20?
Your score won't be included, so it'll, I think, if each and every one of y'all don't do 20, then that will impact the score.
So you need to do 20, but if you have seven or eight that you like the most, give them ones, and give the others, like, zeros. Is that right?
Yeah.
Or .1, or just, the lower, the lower you do it, the less it'll dilute your support for your strongest people. Okay. All right. Thank you. This is just a lot. We usually don't have as many applicants, so.
Well, now I'm leaning toward what Brownie, I mean, we got 20, that's 140 here. If we could, just, I mean, there are a lot of great applicants, and I got three that I really like. And picking two more is going to be tough, but picking 13 more, or 17 more is going to be really hard. Could we look at, I mean, I don't know how many commissioners could actually pick 20 of them. I know a couple of you have. And if it's five each of what we really look at, to score them.
We will work with whatever you give us.
No, I mean, I want everybody, I can do 20, but I'd hate to give 17 of them zeros.
Everyone could send in an email with up to 20 votes. If you don't use all your 20 votes, if you just want to use 10 votes, and we can just count it, and whoever gets the most votes is going to get an interview. That's another way to do it, it's pretty simple.
Okay.
What do y'all think about that?
Just send us your names.
Who do we send the email to?
To DK. You can send it to me.
Let's just do that. I think, I think that's the simplest way to do this. So everyone gets up to 20 votes, you don't have to use all your votes.
Send it in by Thursday at noon.
Send it in by Thursday at noon. All right, that'll work.
That's simple.
And we can use, your scores are ready. We already have your top 20. Do you want us to use that for?
For me?
No, I'm sorry, for, well, I have, we have 20 top for Jasmine and Amanda.
Yep.
Yeah, you can use that, and if the top 10 are the ones that need to be used for getting us to where we need to be, that's fine.
If we go back to your calendars and give us some dates, we can go ahead and.
I'm free all, I'm free in the afternoon all next week.
I am too.
I am, with the exception of Thursday and Friday.
All right.
I'd rather be earlier in the week.
So we got Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday afternoon?
No, I'm not available.
But we got Monday and Tuesday.
Okay, Monday and Tuesday afternoons.
Yeah.
All right, let's shoot for those two dates. And we probably can knock it out, if we have two good opportunities. Yeah, the Zooms will go, they'll be efficient.
Yeah, with Zoom, that'd be quick.
All right.
And will we say afternoon, you're talking from 1:00 or from 1:00 till 5:00?
I'm free anywhere in that, anywhere in that range.
We won't use that a lot of the time, I'm just, I want to block it out.
For me specifically, it's 1:30 to 5:30.
Okay.
You're being a mom, aren't you?
I am, unless you want three kids on that Zoom call.
I don't, honestly, I don't.
On Monday, 2 o'clock is best, but Tuesday's okay, or 1:30.
Okay, Monday 2 to 5, Tuesday 1:30 to 5:30, is the window. We're not going to take that long, I don't think, but that's the window.
I'm fine, as long as I don't have to get up at all.
Okay, all right.
I will say that that does give us a short turnaround time to get these applicants scheduled for interviews, so please be flexible with the process as far as that's concerned.
Good point.
Good point.
It's a good point.
I think it'll be like 15-minute interviews, right?
We usually do 10-minute interviews, I believe.
Yeah, we'll need more than that.
I think 10 minutes is our standard.
Yeah.
It takes a minute or two to get between people, but, so we can knock a lot out in an hour and a half or two hours.
Just ask them, what do you bring to the party?
All right. Let's move on to these other items. The AB Tech Board of Trustees.
Do we have any, anybody on the list?
So really, we're trying to decide the process. Right now, we have three applicants. This is one position, and this was a former commission position that the board had talked about whether it would like to take a commissioner off and have a citizen represent this position.
Okay, who's on the list?
I don't have the list now. There is a recommendation by the board, but I really wanted to get the process before we started this. But I can give out a name of the recommendation, or I can just, at some point in time, give all the list of applicants. Right now, I was just trying to get a process, because we hadn't decided, the board hadn't decided if they wanted to go with a regular citizen, or if they wanted to do a commissioner.
You mean that, their board?
Yes.
This board.
For the AB Tech Board of Trustees.
Or this board?
This board hasn't decided.
Yeah, in the past, we've sometimes had a county commissioner serve in that role. So I'll just time on that first. You know, I'm not, I mean, I'm not against us doing stuff, but I'd be fine with a citizen doing it. You know, we've got the Capitol Commission now, they're doing, it's kind of another way for us to communicate between the boards. So I'm open to, you know, a citizen doing it.
I was thinking, and that there may actually be another position on AB Tech trustees, in addition to the vacant one.
I believe so.
I think there may have been a resignation by someone we appointed, or someone who chose not to renew their term.
I'm not aware of that.
I think it was Jean Bell.
Right.
He did.
Yeah, I believe Jean is not continuing serving.
I forgot, Jean Bell was not going to be.
So before we go, is everyone comfortable with the idea that we'll appoint a citizen to that first position? And then we'll look at any other vacancies we have too, those would also be, you know, citizens that we would apply.
So are there any other, I'd like to know what the required makeup of the board is before I say it's okay for not to have a commissioner. I just want to make sure that, I mean, we were talking about, you know, CT, CTE, right? Career and Technical Training. I just want to make sure that there's some people on there driving that. But I'm okay with, Chairman, with what you said, you know, just seeing that a citizen on there too, it's fine with me. But I'd like, I'd like to be refreshed on who, what's the required makeup of the board?
I can send that out to the commission.
We don't, we don't have to do this tonight, do we?
No.
They do, I mean, I've heard from some AB Tech officials who really would like for us to move ahead, because that one position's been vacant for quite a while, some other folks are rolling off. I think they, I think they have, they feel a need to get some new board members appointed. So we should, if we have three applicants.
And we have, we have closed the actual application process for this, because it was already posted, and there were only three applicants that applied.
And do you, you say you do have the three applicants?
I have that information, I don't have that currently here, but I do have that information. It can be sent.
Why don't we, why don't we, there's, why don't we interview everyone who's applied? And then at the next meeting, we'll decide who we want to appoint. To either one position, or if we've confirmed, you know, formally, Jean's.
Oh, yeah, he's, he's coming off, yeah.
So why don't we interview, we've only got three, let's interview all of them. And then at the next meeting, we can start populating some of these positions.
You want to interview with the Vance Monument Task Force, is that what you're stating? Or you're trying to have a separate interview process?
For the AB Tech Trustees position, yes. We'd interview those applicants too.
Okay.
Does that sound good to everyone? Anyone have any concerns about that? Okay. Then what comes next here? Sorry, my iPad screen just died. The Justice Resource Advisory Council.
So they want to know if they plan on doing their own interviews, and do you, do we want them to make recommendations?
We actually already completed them.
Okay.
We completed the interviews. So we had 12 applicants, there are two slots, community slots for the J-RAC. We had 12 applicants, and we interviewed six applicants. And the J-RAC Board Counsel wants to make a recommendation for two, those two slots and an alternate. The question is whether or not you all will accept the J-RAC's recommendation, or you would like to interview them as well.
Okay, so let me, let me kind of bring this, bring this around. The way we've done it in the past, okay, is if you get 100 people, you let us know you got 100, and if you want to make six recommendations, you make the six. But the people that apply, apply to the commissioners for a board. And then we just, normally, if there's one, we'll, a lot of times, I mean, we'll vote to do the one, if there's two. But if there's multiple, then we'll, typically, we interview unless we decide as a board to take your six recommendations. Okay, so I mean, that's the way it's always, always been, is that if we got a list, we've got a big list, then we go, oh my gosh, we can't interview all those people, so we figured out a way to wind it down. But all that information comes to the commissioners. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I think that's the plan, to provide you all with 12. But the question tonight is if you want, I mean, if you want to see the list first and then decide, or if you want to take the recommendation of the council. Sounds like you would like to see all 12.
What's happened in the past is the 12s come, but we're, but y'all recommend six, okay? Or we see five from AB Tech, and they recommend whatever. I mean, we, it's usually got an asterisk beside of it, which, you know, then down at the bottom, it says that they recommended them.
Yeah, I think where we're getting at is, it was a question about if we were going to do interviews with these applicants, because we had talked about this actual council before, and it was not decided if we were going to do interviews, and so.
Okay. So let me make a suggestion on this. Why don't you send the list of all the applicants with the indication of who they're recommending? I think we have, I think we, I don't think we can take on more interviews in the next two weeks. I think we've got plenty to do. So we'll look at the list, and then two weeks from tonight, we'll come back to this one, and we might choose to do some interviews, or we might say, these are fantastic recommendations, let's go with it. So let's do that. But I don't think we have the bandwidth to do more interviews with the Vance Monument and AB Tech. They're already out there.
If I could just flag, if we could, perhaps, moving forward, go through whatever process we'd need to, to perhaps do with J-RAC, what we've done with some other committees, which is when they have decided to conduct a process through which they're doing interviews and recommendations, that we are, I think we did this with the Women's Commission, that we're saying, we'll sort of, we'll respect those recommendations moving forward. We always have the option to interview, but that that's sort of the general protocol, so that the committee knows that their time is well spent also, if they're going through that process. So anyway, that's a sidebar for a future date, but just flagging a request for that conversation.
I just, I just want to make sure that the 12 people that apply, that we get that, you know, as far as recommendations. Yeah, I mean, as far as recommendations, we can always, as a board, say, yes, we agree to take those recommendations.
And I think Commissioner Beech, I think that's where we are as a staff, is asking for that guidance. Because several of the boards are asking, what should they do? Because in the past, for instance, we talked about the Library Board before, which is coming up next. They have done, they had a large pool, they did the interviews already, and we told them to go ahead and do the interviews. So we were looking for some consistency, because the boards are asking for that. So if you would just give us a process to just say, yes, they can, they can do it, or no, send them all to you. And you can riddle it down, and then let them interviews on your behalf. But, but we're looking for, what does that process look like? So we can have some consistency for them to follow.
I think, I think that's, that makes sense. It's probably not going to be the same process for every board. You know, there are certain boards, like the Planning Board, where I think we would want to fully own that. There's others where it just feels more right for, you know, there to be kind of a, at least a narrowing down, or something like that. So I think we do need to put this on a, maybe one of the upcoming briefing discussions, and just walk through every, every board and say, you know, here's the process for each board. You know, so let's, let's spend some time on that at a meeting in the near future.
Because, I mean, I think it's important for these boards, whether it's the Library Board or whatever it is, to know that the commissioners feel strongly enough, or connected enough to it, to, to make sure that that, that board, whether it's Library Board or whoever it is, is making good appointments. I mean, that, sure, they interview them, and they can send them to us, but they, you know, they're accountable to make good, good appointments. You know, they've got to have a good board that's willing to do the work, and so.
All right.
I think we're together.
All right, speaking of the Library Board.
Hey, is that next?
What are we going to do with the Library Board?
They have it narrowed down to six applicants.
How many spots?
For one per district, as instructed by the commissioner.
We have two candidates for each district.
Correct.
All right, so email those around, and again, we'll either, at the next meeting, go with the recommendation, or choose to interview the finalists, so to speak. So if you could just email those around, we'll come back to this one at the next.
Yeah, and I think.
We haven't seen those names yet, I don't think, right?
For me, if we're going to talk about them, I like to see them here. That's what we've always done, that's what we've always done in the past. Forget about the Vance Monument, because that's kind of, you know, that's a different, that's a different deal. But for the other boards, we've always had a list of them, and so on.
And I can do that, but what has happened is, it has been discussed on whether there should be interviews or not. And so I just wanted to make sure this is brought up to make sure that the process is correct with the Library Board, to make sure that they, you do want to interview these applicants.
And I would say, I would say, I would say this, you know, let's do talk about this soon, but kind of to Commissioner Belcher's point, I think until we tell a board, we're asking you, or we're inviting you to narrow it down, then assume it's coming to us. We'll look at the list, and we'll choose who to interview. So until we give someone else guidance that that's the way we want them to do it, we don't want to do it that way.
That's right, and then it should be on there, yes. We're together.
But let's, let's talk about it soon, because I think it's going to be a mix of both is the ideal, because otherwise, we'll be spending too much time on. is the ideal, because otherwise it's, we'll be spending too much time on just this.
Heard that.
So, all right, um, Board of Adjustments.
So who's on the list?
There is no one on the list.
Okay.
Nate from Planning called and wanted to know if there would be an interview process or do they need to narrow it down?
Interview process.
Holy cow.
Interview process, for sure.
They have 10 applicants and seven positions. They don't want...
We want to see the 10.
Right, okay, so, and then you would decide if...
Absolutely.
You want them to do any process or it's totally going to be the commissioner?
So when we did the, we, we don't normally say, hey, go, we've normally not said to the, to, to the, you know, Nate or that team, whatever, hey, y'all go ahead and narrow it down for us. We, we've not done that in the past.
I, I think it's, I feel, I feel, for me, the Board of Adjustments is one of those that we should talk about it. It's a very powerful board.
No joke.
They make actual decisions about what people can do with their property and can't do. We shouldn't delegate it. I say, send us the 10 and at the next meeting, we'll decide who we want to interview. We might interview all 10 or we might narrow it down. So come to that meeting, prepare to think about who your favorites are for an interview because it's just one position.
And we could raise our hand and ask for help, I mean, you know, in, in a board like that, sure.
I just want to speak up. I mean, I think one thing that Nate from Planning's staff were worried about is the Board of Adjustment has been chaired by a lawyer here in town, Dennis Warner, for some period of time. And it's really helped. So I think you may just want some input to this board. We really like this kind of professionalism for this kind of position. But he knows and we all know it's your decision. That's the end.
I, I think we welcome input from staff and, and, you know, and, and from, from members who served too, even if they don't formally interview people, any of that kind of feedback's, you know, super helpful.
Yeah, we need it.
All right, I think those are all the boards that we needed to cover. So Lamar, thank you for your help on that. And I realize, you know, with the COVID stuff, we just haven't been interviewing people because we've just been, but, you know, this thing's not over yet, so we're just going to have to resume interviewing, but using Zoom for, for a little while, so. Okay, we come now to more public comments. And I'm gonna read a few of these and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Belcher to read, to read a few and then feel free to, we can get someone else to do a few too. All right.
Where are you starting at?
I'm starting from, it says, General Public Comments, 7/21/2020 at the top. All right, so this is an, this was an email that was sent by several dozen people. "I demand commissioners amend their budget and defund the county sheriff's office and detention center by at least 50% immediately. COVID-19 is causing exponential harm by killing our neighbors, family, friends, or leaving them with organ damage to last a lifetime. Furthermore, even the county health board acknowledges that racism is a public health crisis. Now that the diagnosis is official, we need you to effectively address the local pandemic and to refund, and to fund reparations for our Black, Brown, and Indigenous neighbors. As a start, please reinvest funds taken from the sheriff and jail in ways that effectively address the local pandemic. This plan should include an end to the reopening. Only essential businesses should be open with a requirement that businesses provide all workers with protective gear and the mask policy is upheld. All city and county schools must choose Plan C and refuse to return to in-person learning. The county must provide accessible free testing for all who need it, free masks available for everyone who doesn't, have one and funds for increased pay and support for frontline medical and emergency workers. We must address over tourism, and that means the county must shut down all leisure tourism and abolish the TDA and its advertising. The county must open hotels for the unhoused community to prioritize their health and well-being. The Buncombe County Sheriff must also halt enforcing evictions during the COVID pandemic. Durham County's sheriff has made this commitment. Buncombe's must too." And finally, the pandemic must, response must direct funds towards the communities hardest hit and most at risk, especially immigrant communities. The pandemic management must center the needs of communities of color. Going forward, the community must invest in economic well-being of Black, Brown, and Indigenous residents, commit resources to eliminate the racial opportunity gap, and provide deeply affordable housing, land provisions, mental health services, rent subsidies, and eviction diversion, free public transportation, and restorative justice services for all. This is signed by Eric Frid, Sierra Schweitzer, Carly Devour, Amber Frid, Sarah Dover Spike, Tatiana Archuro, Emily Tremel from Candler, Cassidy Doyle, Whitney Whittington, Abby Young, Kate Wheeler, Taylor Labith, Abby Traywick, Jerry Guy, Samuel Rogers, Jason Lunguanti, Rebecca Baylor, Jasmine Francesca, Maniko Shannon, Grant Schumante, Jessica Fox, Daniel Shanifelt Blue, Carly Hartzman, Mary Bolch, Joseph Chavez, Scott Thompson, Julius Davilo, Catherine Walker, Matilda Bliss, Unknown, Marissa Carissa Keen, Phoebe Krasinski, Avery Tarpley, Megan Moore Hubbard, Danielle Waist, Rachel Newsbaum, Caroline Wilson, Jason Roger, Sarah Moran, Tan Lily Anne Murat, Amanda Durst, Heather Harmon, Max McDonald, Karuna Rockwell. And voicemails were left with the same message from Ryan, Samantha, Tyler Jackson, Erica Meyer, Melanie Noyes, Jasmine, Katie Hudson, Victoria, Nick Mello, Alex, Milo Gallagher, Monica Garrett Marsh, John Lilian Merrick, Emily, Davi Cheshire, Max McDonald, Megan Luca, Cheryl Hannah, Haley Fornelli, Kate Wheeler, Matilda Bliss, Joey Harrington, Maya, Rena Armitage, Caroline Wilson, Thorne, Janice Brewer, Phoebe Krasinski, Veronica Coit, Emma Anderson, Christopher Woodward, Grant Schumante, Jeff Suarto, Thomas Haslip, Emily Parker, and an unknown citizen from Woodfin. All right, I'm gonna do a few more voicemails. This one's from Don Yelton. "Hey, I, I just heard your message and it says, 'Public comments will be put in the minutes.' Well, I've been looking at the back minutes and I'm not seeing what Brownie has read. So my comment to you commissioners is that I'm looking for somebody to stand up there because you could have the public in another room viewing, which you have done before in the basement, if you really cared about what the public thought. That they could have social distancing and wear masks, but no, you hide behind the coronavirus and you even hide from the public comments. So you think we're stupid. No, we're not. Now let's see if you'll read this, Brownie Newman. I don't know if you will, and I guarantee you, it won't be written up in your minutes. Bye." All right, from anonymous, hello. "I will not be giving you my name or telling you where I live because I'm not an elective member of the government like you guys are, but I do live here in Buncombe County and I'm calling you today because it's come to my attention that you guys are not, only not planning on defunding the jail and sheriff's department, but you're planning on giving them more money. And that's absolutely unacceptable. I don't know if you've heard about the riots and protests that are happening all over the country, but our demands are very, very clear and it's to defund the police and sheriff's department and jail are all part of that system, so don't do that." Mr. Campbell from Asheville. "I'm just leaving this message in response to the county's scheduled meeting for 5:00 PM. I want to stress the importance that not only does this community, but the council shows support for the Black Lives Movement and defunding APD and redirecting those funds to community outreach programs. The recent actions taken against protester, amongst protesters and injustice deemed worthy of no action is just inhumane and unconstitutional." Garrett says, "I wanted to comment specifically on the budget meeting that's happening with the Buncombe County Commissioners. I want to say it's extremely important and we vote in favor of reparations for the Black community of Asheville and really essentially anybody that is vulnerable. We always have people in society that, who are more susceptible to healthcare and job disenfranchisement, housing discrimination, and it's very much so and very directly up to the people who run the city and the people who run this county to take a vested interest in correcting these problems. Unfortunately, we live in a place that has experienced wanton gentrification, which is an extension of colonialism, which devalues people who are marginalized and people who are vulnerable. And by that, I mean Black members of our community, Latin members of our community, people of color, Indigenous people. A lot of these communities are sort of swept under the rug as not really being part of the little club. So I feel like it's more than ever really important for us to allocate resources, i.e. money out of our budget. I think we are proposing, I think it's $134 million for the City of Asheville budget, which is over 50% of that is garnered through property taxes and those property taxes dictate how much money our schools get. And if we are spending, I believe it's a little over 22% of our budget toward our $30 million police budget, then I think the city shows they have a clear incentive to police the most gentrified areas, which are going to collect the most property taxes. I think we need to reinvest in our communities that are most vulnerable and that are facing the most disparities in our community. I think it should definitely be on the budget meeting for us to show that we care about our, our county as a city, to correct the wrongs that have been historically made through the years. And that includes cutting the police budget by at least 50% for the City of Asheville, and that's around $15 million. That needs to be reinvested in education in the poorest areas that have the least property taxes going to schools, and we need to focus more on righting the wrongs of our healthcare system as far as job discrimination. These are all things that we can correct. These are problems we can solve. These are attainable, and it starts with our county voting in favor of reparations." Mr. Belcher, would you like to take a few?
Glad to. Okay, John Katz of Asheville. "I believe the sheriff's department needs to be defunded. A lot of the funds need to be allocated towards people of color in the community, including Latinx folks. I think Asheville City Council is headed down the right path. Hope to God that you guys follow suit. At the moment, you guys aren't even showing the slightest bit of reformative action to make us feel like you're doing the right thing. And that is saying something." Mary Hendrick of Asheville, "It's come to my attention at the budget for the Asheville Sheriff's Department. It's been increased by about $3 million this year, and that is really disappointing to me because like Asheville has just made reparations towards Black and Brown communities. I feel like those funds should be allocated towards protecting those communities and supporting them more towards COVID response. I really feel like these funds need to go towards the abolition of gentrification in Asheville because that is a huge problem and yeah, it's pretty disgusting." Vanessa Nowak, Asheville. "Although the intentions of shrouding and ultimately hopefully tearing down the Vance Monument are good, I simply don't understand what has taken so long to actually tear it down. I understand that the Vance Monument Task Force is in progress and I respect the idea behind it. Let's just take the eyesore that Vance Monument, let's just take the eyesore that it, the Vance Monument down already. The murals around it are beautiful, but to have that still standing and casting a shadow over Black Lives Matter is a shame and downright disrespectful. Also, I'm very pleased to hear that the council voted on reparations for the Black communities in Asheville. Again, the intention is nice and all, but until we have actual change and there is complete transparency on how these funds will be distributed for the betterment of Black and Person of Color communities, we will not be appeased and we will not back down. Next, I want to bring attention to the fact that even if the Vance Monument gets removed and even if the reparations actually come to fruition, I'm not asking, but rather demanding that the Asheville Police Department be defunded and that the officers that attacked protesters with tear gas May 31, 2020, to June 3, 2020 and destroyed the protester-run medical triage station on June 3, 2020, they be held accountable. While the APD did defunded and have excessive funds that the police department wastes on things like tear gassing their neighbors and new cars and assault weapons, instead, I want the money to be reallocated into the community, particularly the Equity and Inclusion Department, the non-departmental Community and Residence Services. Definitely back into the Black communities and Persons of Color communities, I hope you all do the right thing." From Arcade Willis, "Hello, my name's Arcade Willis and I have worked and attended school in Buncombe County for the last four years. I'm commanding to demand commissioners amend their budget to defund the county sheriff's department and detention center by at least 50%. County Health Board has acknowledged that racism is a public health crisis. We need the local effects of the pandemic to be addressed immediately, with a particular emphasis on centering the Black, Brown, and Indigenous communities who are most affected by paying reparations. To even begin to address historical and present racial injustices in our country, Buncombe County must provide affordable housing, land provisions, mental health services, rent subsidies, and eviction diversion, free public transportation, and restorative justice services. To address the pandemic, the funds diverted from the sheriff's department jail should be invested in managing COVID-19 by ending all reopening, requiring businesses to provide workers with PPE. City and county schools must choose Plan C and refuse to return to in-person learning. Buncombe County should provide free testing, masks, and funds for increasing the pay and support of medical frontline workers. Over tourism must also be addressed. All leisure travel should be shut down immediately, while the TDA and its advertising should be abolished. The county must open hotels for homeless people and end evictions during the pandemic. Durham County Sheriff has committed to ending evictions. Buncombe County should follow suit. Thanks, Arcade Willis." "Amend the budget, save lives." County Commissioner Jessica Schultz, Asheville. "2020 budget, which defunds the health, which defunds the Health Department and increases funds to the Sheriff Department and jail is absurd, disrespectful to your community and downright dangerous. In the midst of a global pandemic, we have seen time, and again, that countries which invested in their communities and focused on healthcare and isolation have successfully flattened the curve, saved lives and been able to reopen safely. Stealing money from the Health Department to appease law enforcement unions will kill citizens. Your job includes ensuring the county is safe and, and this budget shows that you have no interest in doing so. Allowing non-essential businesses to reopen is irresponsible. Furthering the reopening, including schools, will show a complete lack of disregard for the safety of county residents, specifically those most vulnerable, such as those in low-income areas and house, the BIPOC, who are already discriminated against by healthcare systems and the police. The board needs to respect scientists and doctors who have given clear guidelines on how to save lives. The board needs to immediately close hotels to non-essential visitors and repurpose the rooms to provide safe shelter for the unhoused, close all non-essential businesses, suspend all leisure travel in the county, and shut down the TDA. Refuse to reopen schools and invest in supporting distance learning by providing technology and financial stipends to those who require them. Require and enforce the requirement of masks in all public spaces and invest more money in the Health Department, including providing sufficient PPE to healthcare workers, free testing to all citizens, free masks to community members who cannot access them. In addition, going forward, the budget should accurately reflect the needs of the county, including truly affordable housing, living wages, rehabilitation services for mental health and addiction, equitable education services for BIPOC, legalizing marijuana and releasing with an expunged record all inmates with marijuana-related charges, and stronger financial investment in healthcare and education workers. Federal government has completely failed its citizens, but you have the opportunity to support us within the county. Your residents, including myself, are counting on you to help us keep, to help keep us alive. Do not bend to lobbying, instead, consider the ramifications of unnecessary death on your hands. This budget, as it stands, is nothing short of murder." From Santura Pigram, "Dear Mayor Menheimer and Asheville Citizen Council Members," I think this is, went to the wrong one, so I can probably skip that one.
I think you can skip that one, it's not to us.
I shall do that, but with kind regards to whoever wrote it. Okay, so, let me look here just a minute, make sure I'm not... So I'm going to pick it up in the middle where it mentions us, "As all of the members of the Buncombe County Commission should feel deeply embarrassed about not supporting the City of Asheville's decision pertaining to the aforementioned topic, one of the city council members of Asheville to know that your recent decision..." Okay, so that is for them. All right, so let me go on down. Rachel Appleton, "My name is Rachel, live in West Asheville, and writing an email to urge you to amend Buncombe County Sheriff's Office and Detention Center and defund by at least 50%. As a start, please reallocate the funds taken from sheriff and jail to the Black and Brown people of this county. The funds should be used for affordable housing, land provisions, mental health services, rent subsidies, eviction diversion, free public transportation, transformative justice opportunities for all. Defund now, defund now, defund now, defund now, defund now." Thank you, Rachel. Okay, "As a resident of Buncombe County, of Asheville, I demand that you effectively address the pandemic by stopping reopening, having all schools choose Plan C, shutting down all leisure travel, providing accessible free testing, halting evictions from COVID, and directing funds to communities that have been hit the hardest. Also, demand that you pay reparations to Black and Brown residents, cut sheriff and jail budget by at least 50%. To do so, invest in our Black residents and communities." Caroline Sprinkle. "Hey, my name is Aramo O'Eight Campbell, live in the City of Asheville. I'm writing this email in response to the county meeting scheduled for 5:00 PM today. I want to stress the importance that not only does the community, but the council shows support for BLM by defunding APD and redirect the funds to community outreach programs such as affordable housing, mental health services, affordable housing, and public transportation. Recent actions taken against protesters and injustice deemed worthy of no action is inhumane and unconstitutional. Also, want to bring attention to the pandemic crisis and halt on reopens. This includes schools." Amanda Citro of Kandler, North Carolina. "I'm emailing to demand that commissioners amend their budget and immediately take action to defund the county sheriff's office and detention center by at least 50%. This money should be used in ways that support the community instead, especially in terms of making testing for COVID more accessible and providing masks to anyone who needs them. Our community needs support, not only people put in jail. People need to be supported in staying home and the county must shut down all nonessential businesses. Prioritizing tourism right now, which is a lack of concern for people who live in Buncombe County, it must be stopped. Invest in community divestment from the police, jail, and tourism." Amanda Citro. I'm going to read one more and then I'll ask somebody else to jump in. This is from Mad Biscuit. "I used to be proud to live in Buncombe County, but it's so messed up with all the virtue signaling stuff now that I can hardly recognize it. And if I could afford it, I would move to a more sensible area like down in McDowell County or eastern Tennessee. I have Confederate ancestors. I'm appalled at how monuments have been removed in an attempt to appease a Marxist BLM crowd. I wish I could refuse to pay my property taxes in protest as I watch a once great city be destroyed by far-left leaders."
Joe, I'm happy to pick up.
Okey-dokey.
Pass the baton. "To Buncombe County Commissioners, I would like my voice to be heard in response to the Asheville City Council's vote on reparations for Black residents and their descendants, and if the Buncombe County Commissioners are considering the same reparations for all Black residents and their descendants. I am against voting for reparations in Buncombe County. The Buncombe County Sustainability Plan has supplemental strategic priorities that address the issues brought forth by the Asheville City Council's reparations recommendations, which are access to affordable housing, increasing minority business ownership and career opportunities, strategies to grow equity and generational wealth, closing gaps in healthcare, education, employment, pay, neighborhood safety, and fairness within the criminal justice system. The six strategic priorities of the Buncombe County Sustainability Plan are affordable housing, clean and renewable energy, diverse community workforce, early childhood education, justice resource support, and opiate addiction. All of the issues the Asheville City Council wants to address under reparations are already being addressed in the Buncombe County Sustainability Plan, strategic priorities. This is a duplication of effort and adding bureaucracy upon bureaucracy, which helps nobody and costs everybody. All of the issues the Asheville City Council brought up can be applied to all persons in Buncombe County through the strategic priorities without having to add more resources. My recommendation would be to look at the Buncombe County strategic priorities and ensure they are being carried out and make changes within those if necessary. With COVID-19 and reductions in employment and education, we need to be even more sensitive to where our tax dollars are being spent and reduce duplication of effort. Very respectfully, Lynn McNamee Kandler." "Dear Buncombe County Government, I expect tax dollar money to be used for making the community function and thrive. Please do not use government money to promote tourism. It is very clear to me that during a highly contagious pandemic, tourism is dangerous to the citizens who live here. There are so many other ways that you can invest in the community that would be better. Please do what is best for the citizens who live here. Provide support for the people who are truly struggling due to this pandemic. Also, definitely stop throwing money towards tourism. Thank you, Mary Campbell, Buncombe County resident." "Dear Commissioners, I find it deeply concerning that you intend to increase the county sheriff's budget at your upcoming meeting, especially in light of the fact that you are also planning on taking funding away from the Health Department. In a time like this, while we are struggling with the pandemic, we need more funding for Health and Human Services. You need to take that intended police budget increase and instead increase funding for the Health Department and other county services that assist our marginalized communities. Thank you, Elsa." "I'm a resident of Buncombe County and I work in public health and social justice. I urge you to put reparations on the agenda for discussion and to join the city commissioners in this historic movement to dismantle structural racism in our community and begin to undo the great harm it has caused. Thank you for your consideration. Warmly, Emma Olson."
"Hi, my name is Graham Webb, a resident and native of Asheville, and I am emailing to demand that Buncombe County invests in reparations for its Black community. Repurpose funds from sources that disproportionately cause harm to Black people and people of color, like the sheriff and jail budgets. Use those funds for things like affordable housing, public transportation, investment in Black business, and more equitable education. Follow the lead of Asheville in this regard and answer the city council's call for Buncombe County to make reparations. Graham Webb." "Dear County Commissioners, I am a constituent from Arden, North Carolina, and I am writing you today in regards to many issues that are coming before Buncombe County. As follows are some suggestions as to how we can move forward equitably and justly. A. The county must stop the reopening. Only essential businesses should be open with the requirement that businesses provide all workers with protective gear and that the mask policy is upheld. B. All cities and schools must choose Plan C, refuse to return to in-person learning. C. Shut down all leisure travel and abolish the Tourism Development Authority. D. Provide accessible free testing for all who need it. Free masks available for everyone who doesn't have one. Funds for increased pay and support for frontline medical and emergency workers. E. Open hotels for the unhoused community to prioritize their health and well-being. F. The Buncombe County Sheriff must halt enforcing evictions during the COVID pandemic. Durham County Sheriff has made this commitment. Buncombe's must too. G. The pandemic response must direct funds towards communities hardest hit and most at risk, especially immigrant communities. H. The county must invest in the economic well-being of Black and Brown residents, deeply affordable housing, land provisions, equitable education outcomes, mental health services, rent subsidies, and eviction diversion, free public transportation, and restorative justice services. I hope you will take this to heart and act accordingly as to the demands of justice you have been hearing from the county's residents. Thank you for your time. Signed, V., with a quote, 'Let us not seek to satisfy our thirst for freedom by drinking from the cup of bitterness,' from Martin Luther King Jr.'" "Good afternoon. My name is Bo Rudolph and I am a Buncombe County resident concerned with the out-of-touch behavior exhibited by our commissioners. The people of Buncombe County have been very clear about how the approved budget abandons the well-being of year-round residents and places more importance on tourism. Southern states are still reaching record COVID-19 cases and encouraging interstate travel from our neighboring states puts our citizens at even larger risk. For the past two months, the United States has seen protests surrounding the mistreatment of our Black population on multiple levels and Buncombe County is no exception. I am demanding that commissioners amend their budget and defund the county sheriff's office and detention center by at least 50% immediately since no initiative has been made on your behalf to do your job and respond to your constituents' concerns. I have some suggestions. As a start, please reinvest funds taken from the sheriff and jail in ways that effectively address the local pandemic. This plan should include an end to the reopening. Only essential businesses should be open with the requirement that businesses provide all workers with protective gear and that the mask policy is upheld. I thank you for reading this email and hearing my voice, but please understand that you have disappointed many of your neighbors and fellow residents. I hope you see this email and take it to heart because we will return to the streets if you continue to ignore your city. Sincerely, Bo Rudolph." "To whom it may concern, my name is Patrice Audet and I have lived in Buncombe County my entire life.